...regularly scheduled mayor council meeting for the town of Berlin. It is Monday, July 8th, 2024. For those of you that may have seen some agency deficiencies. The room's a little bit warmer than it typically is. With that being said, we do have some bottled water over there where you can sign in. Please stay out of that. I'm not in here, but if you need some water, we have it. If you need a moment to step out, that's really understandable. Anybody up here, or you feel like you can't go any further, let me know. But I think we can probably take it through the work that we have to do. So with that, please join me for a moment of silence. I'll let it literally.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the approval of consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Set of motion by Councilmember Boris. Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record be placed at the consent agenda passage unanimous. There's all council members here. Up next is a series of announcements, item number two. These are poll votes that were conducted. We had one meeting in June and not a second meeting. So over that lapse of time, we did have a few items that were time sensitive. With that, poll votes were conducted via email. The agenda item 2A is for Mr. Rick Baldwin, an additional $5,000 to finish out FY '24. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Rick Baldwin has stepped up in the absence of our planning director position to be able to help ensure that our work in the planning department is able to continue to move forward. So the mayor, or the council approved the addition of not to exceed $5,000 to finish out FY '24. Four council members approved. One was not able to respond within the timeframe that was given. The summary of the vote was Councilmember Green, Nerr, Nichols, and Boris were in favor. Vice President Burrell, would you like to correct the record on your vote or let it stand?
I agree.
So then the record reflects the four, four to one abstention or no response for that vote. Agenda item 2B is Davis, Bone, and Fardell Lead Service Line Project. There's a sub item number one, which is Lead Service Line Inventory Task Order Number One for a total of $47,040. Agenda, or subsection two is Lead Service Line Replacement Task Order Number Two, which is a design phase of $74,920 and a construction phase of $117,800. The Lead Service Line Project Department of Environment. It's important to note that DBF secured the funding for these projects, which were among the highest awards in Maryland to date, and DBF's costs are also funded. This is under the Maryland Lead and Copper Rule Revision, which mandates identification and replacement of lead service line, including those which would normally be on the private side of the service and therefore the responsibility of the private property owner. With the Lead Service Line Inventory Task Order Number One, DBF proposal was for a total of $47,040. The vote was for three council members to approve. Two did not respond. Those approving were Councilmember Green, Nerr, and Boris. No response from Vice President Burrell or Councilmember Nichols. Would either of you like to correct the vote for the record?
Yes, I'll approve. I thought I'd think.
Okay. So. Okay. So let the final vote tally for the Lead Service Line Task Order Number One reflect that the unanimous council approved. Subsection two was the Lead Service Line Replacement Task Order Number Two. DBF proposal was for two phases. Design at $74,920 and construction at $117,800. The same vote total with three approving, Councilmember Green, Nerr, and Boris. No response from Vice President Burrell or Nichols. Would both of you like to correct the vote total?
I have a good response.
Yes.
Okay. And it could be an error on our side. So let the record reflect that Vice President Burrell did vote in approval for that?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nichols?
I did.
Yes.
So that vote unanimous as well. So I'd like to read them out so we can correct the record. All right. Davis, this is item 2C, Davis, Bone, and Fardell, Route 346 Water Supply and Treatment. This is Task Order Number Three. Planning and design phase of $80,500 and construction phase of $73,000. Says Route 346 Water Supply and Treatment, also funded through MDE, the same as above. The vote total was positive for those unanimous. All right. So that summarizes Agenda Item Number Two. Up next is Agenda Item Number Three, which are presentations. The first is Dealey Insurance and Chesapeake Employers Workers' Comp. Both of the, I think we have from Dealey, we have Laura and Michelle. And from Chesapeake Employers Insurance, we have Jackie, if you could come forward, as well as Kelsey. We'll talk a little bit about what we have here.
So I have Laura and, oh, I'm sorry.
And come on around this way if you don't mind. Just be careful, we've got a little bit of a cordon.
Special work.
Yeah, exactly. Please, please take this down for you all. Typically, we don't have folks walking through this side. All right. I'm gonna stand on this side and Kelsey can take that side. Why don't you tell us just a little bit about what we have here? And Kelsey, if you could.
Well, I will introduce inside Laura Bren and Michelle Hoffman are both with Dealey Insurance. We have Jackie Sayjack. She is with Chesapeake Employers Insurance. And they are here tonight to present a dividend check that we received for our safety. And I want to thank our department heads because you guys help keep our staff safe. You teach them, you know, what needs to be done. And then I want to thank these lovely ladies for all their help and always securing, you know, good renewals and always being accessible. And, you know, so I don't want to steal the thunder here, you know. So if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said this is the second largest dividend payout you've ever seen?
It's the largest one, I'm sure. And I can let Jackie speak to that, but it's a pretty significant one that we have. And that's because, again, the hard work that everyone's done. So sometimes when we have a challenging year, everyone kind of puts the microscope down, but then also making sure that we're highlighting that we have successful years. And it's literally every department, each and every employee that works together to make that happen with friendly reminders from their friends within the government who are also helping to keep that on track. So thank you all. All right. So here it is.
Okay, yeah. Well, show it to them. They haven't even seen this yet.
So I'm bringing a big check, is that okay? As long as you bring a real one.
Everybody up there, smile, cheer for them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You want to say it?
I do not. I think it's.
We're good?
Yeah.
Well, we are very appreciative. Actually, when we were sitting in Kelsey's office, you all were sitting. I popped in and was made aware of the dividend check. I was like, this is a good opportunity for all of us to be able to celebrate this milestone together. It's not every year we get to do this, but it's important to note that, like the scale that you were talking about. We have good years, we have bad years. This was a pretty good year and a lot of thanks to.
And part of having a good partner like Chesapeake, not everyone does this. So this is a corporate initiative that Chesapeake Employers is doing as well. And so I can say that not all of our insurance carriers do this, but this is one that Chesapeake does.
So we are the only nonprofit workers compensation company in Maryland. So as a result, you know, we are able to return the funds to the insurers that have one of those ones you guys have.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's awesome. Put it out there often. All right. We should start on a good note, right? That's how we leave town. Okay. Up next is Agenda Item 3B, and that's Go Green, No Sea. We have the Director Josh Chamberlain here with us tonight to go over it. Come on up. And we'll go through a little bit about the services that you all provide and maybe how we can help. Yes, just have a seat. Introduce yourself if you don't mind and then kind of take us off the mayor. Do you know anything? If you can, thank you.
Sure. Thank you guys for having me. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, everybody else. Is that Ivy? I am Josh Chamberlain, the founder of Go Green, No Sea. We're a nonprofit in Ocean City, Maryland. I'm born and raised here in Berlin. Moved to Los Angeles, became a filmmaker, still working television and film. Came back and started this organization in 2018, so we've been going for about seven years. Our main goal at Go Green, No Sea is to turn Ocean City into the first zero-waste resort town in the United States and to inspire other surrounding municipalities and people across the country to follow our footsteps and do better for the environment. As we all know, climate change and things like that, to inspire people to do better, basically. We work with the town of Ocean City hand in hand. We onboarded the convention center this year for the first time ever. They're moving towards compostable products. They're composting. We're getting a great response from the city. We do events like Ocean's Calling Festival, the Country Fest, Bike Fest. We introduce recycling and composting at large scale at these events and well supported by them as well. Our main staple is the compost program, so I'm sure you can play that. So what we do in Ocean City is we drive around a box truck and we pick up food waste at 20-plus participating Ocean City businesses. This includes buffets, flower shops, juice shops, crab houses, fishtails, secrets, people who prep food in the morning. Sometimes they participate by bringing food waste from the tables, from customers, like the Hobbit Restaurant. We pick up on Mondays and Friday mornings, and our entire program is run by volunteers. So every Monday and Friday morning, we're at our farm in Bishopville. We pick up the cans of food waste and we replace them with clean cans. We use our box truck that is supported and wrapped by Ocean City, Maryland. We drive it to the farm, we unload it with our volunteers, we clean the cans, and then we start the cycle all over. This year, we're aiming to do about 1 million pounds in food waste divergence since the inception of our program. We started with one restaurant and now we're well above 20. And we're at pretty much max at what we can take based off of our volunteers and the equipment we have. So we're working hard trying to get grants and more funding to expand our equipment and operations so that we can grow the program to not only just Ocean City, but surrounding municipalities like Berlin, for example. So as you can see in the video, this deal is one of our restaurants that works well with us. They've been with us for like, I think, three years. And you'll see some upcoming footage of us going to the farm, unloading the cans, and they're already good. So today we had a Snow Hill Summer Camp visit us at the farm. They got hands-on experience with the kids, learned how composting works and this type of products that we can take at the farm. We do lots of community events such as beach cleanups and mostly participate in a lot of the festivals in Ocean City, such as Ocean's Calling, as I mentioned before. And how much time do I have? Just so I don't.
You're.
We're able for four hours.
Ten minutes.
So that's basically the essence of our program. This, last year, we did 350,000 pounds of food waste. This year, we're actually on track to do a little bit less. We're noticing that town is a lot slower. Food waste is a great indicator of how busy a restaurant is. And we can tell just by the amount of food waste that we're taking that town is most definitely slower than last year. And we track everything using our spreadsheets and data points, so we can tell you exactly how much food waste we're diverting from a single restaurant. The Bayside Skillet, for example, is one of our best participating composting restaurants in the town. They divert more orange peels than all of our restaurants combined. We probably bring in a pile of orange peels as high as the ceiling every Monday. Their juice bar is phenomenal. Yeah. So if you get to go to Bayside, definitely give them a shout out for doing some great composting with us. And then Ocean City restaurants love it because they don't pay extra fees to get their dumpsters picked up because we divert all the food waste. So not only do some of the dumpsters not smell anymore because we're diverting food waste, but it's also saving some restaurants money. And the way it works is Ocean City pays our partner, Ocean Compost, per ton of food waste removed, the same cost as they pay the incinerator. So there might be a time in the future where we can drop our price even lower than the incinerator and save the city more money. And this is something we want to spread messages across from municipalities because we attended the largest compost convention in the country last year, and everybody is beginning to shift to composting. And this is very important because we can possibly divert food waste and waste cheaper than what you are using to landfill it. And this is very important because not only can we take food waste, we can begin to switch over products towards compostables. So your restaurants, your cups, your forks, your knives, your plates can all be brought to our farm and turned into healthy compost and even pizza boxes. So as you can see, we're dumping some of the food waste on our landing pad. We're gonna mix it with wood chips, and we're gonna put it on a pile. And within eight weeks, it's gonna turn into healthy compost soil. And the number one question we get is, what do you do with the compost? This is the first year that we've been able to sell the compost, so we have a huge pile of compost available. So not only are you gonna be closing loop with taking waste and turning it into compost soil, no more using pesticides and unsafe stuff on your lawn. This is 100% safe for pets and things like that, and including our waterways and fates. So this is a great additive to close the loop and make circular economy for everybody. So my message to everybody is this will save your city money. Let's get behind it and bring composting to Berlin. We'd like to open it up to some residential composting. I'd love Berlin to be like one of the first ones to introduce it and restaurants as well, so.
Josh, you and I have talked about this for a couple of years.
Yes.
The challenge, at least when we talked, was you needed some assistance with getting it to the farm.
Yes.
And I know that businesses always ask for this type of service, but we really are constrained a little bit by our staff. What I've been thinking as a potential way that we can even get this across finish line is possibly with Ivy and the farmer's market, if we could set up like a day that folks could bring their compost to the farmer's market and then to the central pickup and then farm it over to the farm. I think it could be a little bit more efficient for us.
Yeah. And we found a spot actually for us at the farmer's market. We did a little walk through, so that's definitely a possibility for sure. Yeah. But just until we get some good grant money and then be able to expand our trucks, be able to expand employees, we're kind of stuck at this high plateau. And once we get that seed of money, we can go to our next level, which is double the restaurants, more employees, bigger trucks, more tractors, things like that, equipment that we desperately need in order to grow this program as the work should be.
Are there other comments or questions you can talk about?
Yeah. So thanks for the presentation. Question about the piece of it where max capacity is bad is what basically prevents us from having any sort of similar program here in Berlin where there's the actual P and C. Like, because there's no way for you all to come pick them up like you do now in Ocean City on Monday and Friday.
Yeah. Without possible funding, we are at, and we have 20-plus volunteers at the farm right now who show up Mondays and Fridays in 100-degree weather and all that stuff. So, yeah, we're at our maximum what we can take.
And you mentioned that Ocean City burns trash, right?
Yeah.
So they pay your company or your organization.
Our partner.
The partner. The same fee that it costs to burn trash.
Correct. So Ocean City pays $100 a ton to burn it, and they pay Ocean Compost $110 a ton to take the food waste. So they lose no money doing and working with us. But logistically, if you think about it, if a dumpster fills up three times a week, let's take the Bayside Skillet for example. We remove one dumpster per week from them based off of the food waste that we take off of. Our data shows us this. Last year, we removed five tractor trailers from driving waste to Pennsylvania. So that's five tractor trailers less that Ocean City had to fill up, haul, and move with their employees. We estimate that we can, if we go full-blown, up to 30 tractor trailers per year that we can eliminate from the waste stream. So already, there's our savings to cost. And also, if we're moving dumpsters of food waste from restaurants, that trash truck does not have to go to that restaurant every week, twice a week. Now they can only go maybe once a week. So you have fuel savings cost, you have employee time savings cost. So all these logistics need to be figured out, things like that, as we grow the program.
Sure. So it sounds like, Mayor, if you're a baby step toward getting involved in this, maybe having a disposal site.
Okay, you're wrong. I'd love to go full-blown. We don't have the ability to.
Right.
If I work and train by some of the same things they're trained by, which is staff and.
Right. Yeah. To me, yes, once I heard that we're at max capacity for volunteer, that to me took out, really, probably took out residential diversity for Berlin.
Right.
You know, I like the idea of stepping into it, you know, with that, you know.
Pole walk run is our basic approach to everything, and my job here today is just literally to plant the seed and then see where it grows. And if it starts with the farmer's market, you know, that's it, so.
So what does that look? So what is that? I'm confused. What does that mean? Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Thank you. I'm 25. I'm confused. If you can clear out the farmer's market transfer, what would that look?
So that would look like this. We would drive our truck over here on Sunday mornings, and we would broadcast to everybody who comes to the farmer's market, "Bring us your food scraps, bring us your pizza boxes," and also at the same time, "Get a bucket of compost for $5 for your garden." And so people could make this a transfer station. We would take the compostables back to our farm, drop them, and give people compost, spread the word, and then this will grow. This is what they do in DC and Baltimore and things like that.
Where's the location that you look at?
Right here by the Fort Epsom, so sure. Yeah. We already have. Yeah. So it's a free service, you know?
I'm sorry to cut you off. My only thing, I think we need to be very explicit about what. I don't like the language. I think we even need to be very explicit as to what we accept compost-wise. Because, I mean, if you're watching the videos, you're saying food scraps, and we're thinking, "I thought I saw fried chicken up there."
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, things like that, yeah. But then again, you know, I also saw egg cartons. You know what I mean? Like you're saying, pizza boxes. I don't want somebody to walk up here with all the Amazon boxes and think that you're looking at.
Right. There's education.
Yes. That would be key because I don't, I'd hate for someone to think they're doing right and they don't necessarily have the right information, and then we get left with a pile of boxes taller than you on the side of the street. I think it's great. I just, you know, education is key.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does it smell bad?
No. No, our farm has a house within 150 feet of our piles, and we've never had a complaint. We properly maintain our piles. In terms of education, we are very heavy into social media and videos. We have a huge following. Oh, yeah, Mary Beth Corozza loves us and she always comes to the farm. So we like people to watch our videos and learn how the process works. We also do like Ocean Pines Day Day and stuff like that, so we educate the public. And they're just amazed, like, they're like, "You can do pizza boxes? Like, that's crazy." And like, they'll bring us stacks and stacks of pizza boxes. So education is key.
Good point. So, I mean, are you, when do you plan to come, when do you want to start? I guess this is for.
I think, I mean, we're working out of logistics, and you guys are pretty much halfway through your season at the farmer's market. So this might be a next year thing that we go full-blown and announce it, and that would be a great start to me. I think so, so.
Yeah. It's better to not rush.
Right.
And this, we want a good attendance. We want folks to be engaged. And I think we also have to be able to educate folks about how to store that type of stuff.
Right.
For a week, right?
Yep.
So that we have another issue.
Yes. I will make it super simple. Freeze it, bring it, drop it, you know, something like that.
And Jimmy's also working on some branding for trash trucks, so.
And if anyone, you know, catch me out after the meeting, I'm happy to answer any questions and talk about our program. I'm open to anything. We're also available on Instagram at GoGreenNoSea and Facebook. We're very active and social with our community.
I'm just a little curious about the process. You said you cover the pile of food waste with wood chips?
Yes.
So you have to smother in wood chips?
Yeah. Do we have plenty of wood chips?
Do you have to smother the food waste with wood chips or?
So the process works by dropping the food waste off at the pad. And we have 12 wood chip companies that we work with that donate their wood chips to us. We find that wood chips are better than leaves because leaves clump together and don't allow the food waste to break down. We tried something with Ocean Pines and it didn't work. So we mix the wood chips with the food waste with moisture, then we put it on our pile, and we let it sit there for three months, and it turns into soil right away. And then the following year, we screen the compost and then we sell it. And I invite anybody, absolutely anybody who's at the farm, Mondays and Fridays from 9:00 till 11:00 a.m., just direct message us on any of our platforms. Today, we had Delaware there, and we had a summer camp there today. Everybody that goes to the farm, 95% of them are like, "Oh, my God, I'm so impressed and amazed by this operation." It's quite impressive.
It's cool to watch you guys. Except, I mean, I've followed on social media. It's fun to watch and not then there to participate.
Yeah. Let's do it through the trend, everybody.
Yeah, it sounds funny.
We'll take the trash, I think we'll take the trash road.
Any other questions for that?
I just wanted to say that I've been working with Josh here, representing the town of Berlin, for how many years now?
A.
A number of years. We started with reusable bags that we donated, and so I could vouch for Josh. He is the real deal, and what he's doing is, I'm very impressed about how you've progressed over the last several years, and I'm really hoping that we can get this thing going over next year.
Yeah. People think this is my full-time job. This is not my full-time job. This is my, it's a nonprofit. We all volunteer. No board members receive a salary. Everybody's volunteer-based, and that's the only way I solve this organization succeeding, is putting the money right back in the community. Every grant we get, we put right back into funding. And as you can see, the proof is in what we do. Started diverting 2,000 pounds, and now we're up to 350,000 pounds per year. So the growth has been absolutely exponential. And all the restaurants that participate with us, all the businesses do not have to participate. They're doing it out of the bit of their heart for the climate. It's a pain in the butt. They work with people who don't speak English, management, employees, and they're all doing a fantastic job, and we definitely applaud them for that.
I'm happy with people's honesty, but I think about this, and I think about the year that you were doing the pumpkins.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So I was really into that and watching and keeping track. At my house, everybody gets a pumpkin to repot. Almost a dozen pumpkins at my house.
Yes.
Right. We do a dozen pumpkins after.
Halloween cost you guys money. It literally cost you money to have Halloween, right?
Yeah.
We can take all those pumpkins, all those hay bales, all those corn stalks, and we can divert it to the farm and turn it into soil. And you can do a whole marketing campaign with it. This is the soil for Halloween. Like, there's so much opportunity.
So, I mean, if we're talking about making this something that becomes a part of next year's farmer's market, just putting that out there again with the education process, again, even if we quarterly, you know what I mean? When Halloween comes, make that discussion, please, to do the, if we did the pumpkin drop off, it's a pound, that's one year, or maybe two years, I don't know how many years it was. But if we did, you know what I mean, start it with baby steps in that regard. You don't take Christmas trees, do you? I'm not trying to. How about. I'm just saying, I'm just saying. You know what I mean? Even if it's not, but I mean, little things like that, if it were something per quarter, just preparing everyone on what's coming and something to look forward to, even out there with the pumpkins.
I'm 100%.
Thank you again, Josh. Thank you for the work that you all do. And if there's a way that you can help pump out some times if you're asking for volunteers and stuff like that, get it over to Ivy or to our staff here and we'll take care of that.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much for having me, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Agenda Item Number Four. And Item Four are, all of these are items for approval. So with that, we'll take public comment before each item's action. Agenda Item 4A is motion 2024-38, special event permit for the Smack Family Reunion at Stephen De Cater Park. And I think all of Smack's gonna run. DeCater Park. And I think Donald Snack is going to run point on that. Come forward if you don't mind. We know each other.
It's not the Snack family reunion. I love my cousin Donald Snack, but it's the Red Els family reunion.
Okay.
Yes. And Donald Snack is our representative, but it's the Red Els family reunion.
My mother, my mother is a Red Els.
Just introduce yourself, and then for the record, and then go ahead and give us a little bit of information about the event, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. My name is Donald C. Snack, Sr. First of all, to the honourable members, councilmembers, it's a pleasure being here to see you with you all. You're a family unit, you're a house. My test is to get your face in the head part, you know, so. We have, we have over 50 people, so we have a good line of sound. And I told you, because you're here tonight, and there's your proposal for, there are hundreds of people for, they got that.
Thank you. Any questions for the council?
The date of this, this event is scheduled for August 3rd?
Three days.
And the time from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
Yes.
And then other questions? If not, we'll open it up to the public for any comments. Stephen, now we'll take an action for approval. So a motion by Vice President Burrell, second by Councilmember Nerk, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of votes. Let the record reflect the vote unanimously. Thank you so much. You 're welcome. You all enjoy, and hopefully the August 31st day of work.
I wouldn't call it.
See you. Up next is agenda item 4B, motion 2024-39, special event permit for One Love at Henry Park. And the event coordinator is Joseph Muller.
Muller, yeah.
Come forward if you don't mind, just name for the record, and tell us a little bit about the event.
My name's Jess Mara. And so what I wanted to do was, I spent most of my younger years in and out of being incarcerated in rehab, and I've overcome lots of different obstacles, tribulations, and things. And I wanted to just spread the message to some people that maybe possibly needed to hear. I wanted to, I wasn't quite sure how I was going to go about this. I kind of feel like I was being guided by God himself. So it's still a little shaky, you know? I didn't know how I was going to get people there at the park. I was planning on possibly making some flyers, kind of just walking the streets of Flower Street and Bay Street and things, and handing out flyers to some people. And that's why I'm at this meeting, because I wasn't quite sure how many people were going to show up. It could be zero, it could be 150. I don't know, you know? So I just kind of wanted to gather some people together and just share the good news of, you know, that there's a power grid in ourselves that can help us overcome things, and just show them some love, and then tell them where it came from.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story with us, Justin.
You're welcome.
And for everything you've overcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to just announce the date? I know it's here, it's August 17th.
August 17th, yeah.
And then from 6:00 to 7:00.
6:00 to 7:00.
To help get the word out for anybody that's maybe tuning in.
Right.
And then we'll open it up for questions from the council.
So I hear you when you say spreading the news, spreading the word, and you say white music, like, you'll be playing white music, reggae. Are you?
Correct.
Is that the extent? And it's an hour. So 6:00 to 7:00, not 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.? We're talking 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., correct.
Is the extent of our event, music and testimonials, what do you think?
It's pretty much just my testimony. I'm just going to, I'm going to get there a little early. I'm going to have the music playing while people are gathering, walking in, walking out, and then the music will be turned down as I speak, and then maybe some music near the exiting when people are leaving and coming and going as well. And then I was told that I was left in charge for the cleaning of the park, that they were going to give me some extra trash cans, so I was going to stay a little extra, and make sure I got all that done as well.
Have you, have you reached out to any of the organizations that could like partner with you on something like that?
No, I have not.
I mean, do you think you could help like maybe connect with some resources?
Oh, yeah.
Are you, are you firm on your date? Because I think your vision's good, and what kind of share is probably really impactful for those. But sometimes as a way to help like get more people there?
Right.
Partnering with some of the agencies that are in the area could be something worth a lot.
Yeah, that'd be great. I, I would love to look into that, you know? I do a lot of things with just me and God himself, so I don't really, you know, have that much networking going on. I kind of stay off of social media. I post a few things here and there, but I kind of just keep myself, keep to myself. So social media wasn't a very good way to broadcast it either. So the flyers was all I could come up with at the time. And I love interacting with people as well, so I thought maybe just walk in the streets and just interacting with people, and showing some love and handing out some flyers would be a good thing, good way to get it started, so.
Well, we could always ring for a vote this evening, or if you would like, you could, we could always maybe put it on hold for maybe the next meeting, and you could coordinate Ivy to see if you can get some partnerships and come back. It's up to you. How do you want to proceed?
Tell them what you mean by partnerships.
Yeah, can you explain a little one how that works?
Let's talk, we'll talk about all of that after.
I think it could be better offline, like outside of the meeting setting, than maybe like one-on-one, for like a small group here in town hall, just to kind of brainstorm some ideas and help you make sure you have something that's really impactful.
Yeah, absolutely. I would love to go that route, you know, because, you know, the way things were going, I didn't know if it was something that would, like I said, zero people or 150 people, so I didn't know. I would love to make sure that it was, it was something more impactful than, you know, making sure it was going to turn out okay. So that'd be great. As far as the date goes, I was kind of just going by faith. When I went and filled out the paperwork, that was the date that was given. So I was just going with my vision. So I'll stick with that date if that's okay. Unless, you know, there's a roadblock or something.
Well, I mean, you're certainly able to. We can ring for a vote this evening, but it's better to have those things together, what your partners are and stuff like that. Our next meeting is July 22nd.
July 22nd, okay.
So the only thing I would say is maybe in your conversations with some partner engagement seats, have a conversation with them about the date, and see if they would be able to pull it together and shorten the timeframe.
Absolutely.
So then maybe, maybe if you're open to that, coming back to see us on the 22nd?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. Same time, 7?
Same time, 7:00.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
When Johnny comes back, he has selected the 17th. Could we like hold that date for him when Johnny gets back?
It would have been penciled into the calendar, whatever time it's set in the calendar.
Yeah, you're not going to lose the date. Wait until the 27th.
All right, well, I'm going to think of motion, then table.
Till the next meeting.
Motion 2024-39 until this, this number's given, until the.
July 22nd.
Thank you, the July 22nd.
So the motion by Councilmember, where's the table? Motion 2024-39 until our next meeting.
Thank you.
And the second by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of votes. Let the record reflect the vote unanimously table, and we'll see you again next Monday.
All right, boy, thank you.
If you need anything at all, just let us know.
Appreciate it.
And Ivy's got a card for you, so we can get you all set up.
Thank you a lot.
All right, up next is motion 2024-40, and that's to reduce the speed limit on portion Flower Street. The Chief of Police is going to run point.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Chief outside, Mark Crawford. I think he's wearing the best dress.
Thank you, thank you. We're coming for the council to have the area between the parts, the only part of Flower Street that is not currently 25, switched from 30 to 25. That area consists of the stop sign from Seahawk to Town Limits, which is at the end or back of Stevie DeCater Millstone.
So Chief, there's, yes, from 30 to 25, and that's where the new speed camera will be right, that's set up right now there at the dirt road that goes back to High Street and Millstone. It will be at the speed of a change of 25.
Well, then, if you're with us, say dice for it, but you would have to say our message.
Also, comments from the council?
So, you know, I think that this is phenomenal, changing the speed limit to 25. I will say this, and I know it's outside of our jurisdiction, but I'm saying anyway, I really would like for all, I mean, the entire length of Flower Street to be in that 25. So, so for clarity, for folks who are listening and those who haven't called yet, so that you're clear on what this means, it means Flower Street that's on my side of the bridge is already 25. Where it, when you cross that bridge and it says county maintenance from there until you get to about, the end of the cornfield, right now it's corn, because I was trying to figure out what was this even, the end of the cornfield, that is 30, so just beyond that Cornell Lane is still 30, because that's county maintenance, not county maintaining. Me personally, I would like to see that section also at 30, I mean, 25. I was hoping that that was a conversation that we as a town could have with the county, so that everything could be uniform, 25, 25, 25. Because let's be real, yes, I'm an advocate of 25 miles an hour, yes, I'm a huge advocate of putting that speed camera there, because I can tell you to slow down all day long, but until it hits you where it hurts, which is your pocketbook, you're not going to slow down. But I can tell you, as I sit on my front porch, every morning, once parties pass the zoning of that speed camera, you can hear the engine rev right back up. So for consistency and safety for all of Flower Street, I would personally love to see that county portion at 25 as well.
If we get to a point of motion, why don't we draft a letter to send to the county?
I love that part. Put that in there, yes.
Boy, you're going to do that with your motion here. Any other comments from the council?
I would like to hear from what, what the company.
Yes, thanks. But I just wanted to capture counsel.
I would, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Nichols. I think that if whoever's motion should include a letter to the county, that it seems a little.
Can you put microphone, please?
Yes. I agree with Councilmember Nichols. Whoever makes that motion includes the, in that letter to the request of the county. Seems a little odd, maybe we go, if you're turning right from the school complex on the flower, it would be 25, 30, then 25. So.
It's town versus.
No, I understand, but I think, I think a letter including the motion would be, would be great. Otherwise, it's a little awful. Safety first.
Any other comments before we open it up to the public?
Okay.
We'll open it up to the public for any comments regarding the change of speed limit as denoted on page. I don't have the name covered, but.
46.
We're seeing, thank you, 46, you can pack it.
47.
Somewhere in the vicinity of 45, 46.
27.
If you have a question, just call up there. Just name and street name, and then, as related.
Sorry. Name, John, 766, this is really a question, it's a comment, it's close. But if, when we're just seeing the speed limit to 25, maybe we could also think about adding a sidewalk to that section of Flower Street? Because it, I like the idea of having Flower Street, you know, full walkover community, where students can walk to school, walk to middle school, walk to high school. And right now, it's not really possible, or at least it's a lot of interest. And there's a section that has a sidewalk for personal protection reasons. And then right after the bridge, there's, this is one set that we're taking to make sure that, you know, the kids are safe, and that everyone's well and healthy and all that stuff. But if it just, you know, make the city, makes it up, to help keep your nerves.
Mayor, can you explain, just while we're down here, the sidewalks stop at the bridge, because that's where Town Limits stop. But then, there's the road that annexation against us the rest of the way out to the high, to the high school, middle school. Is there inclusion there for us to put it? Because do we pave Flower Street from the bridge to Seahawk?
Jimmy can speak better to what sections are paved. You can, well, the line sort of cover the.
It's a little tricky. That's why I would like you to have an answer.
It sort of jumps in and out of town and county, but I don't believe it's a reason for people to ask for that. But.
Who pays for the road portion?
We pay, we pay for it.
Yes, we pay for it, yes.
Like we did with the line striking to.
Okay. Sidewalks would be, I guess, yes, it's a safety, but what is the demand, and how much traffic do we see?
Are you saying Flower or Seahawk?
I was saying Flower Street is.
Well, because we just.
Right.
But we just striped Seahawk, right?
And Flower.
And that portion of Flower.
And the portion of Flower, which is shown here on the diagram.
Okay. So then, with the sidewalks, thank you. Thank you.
So I have a question.
Okay.
Sidewalks.
Yep, name, street name.
So if.
Oh, hold on, one second.
If part of the discussion is, it goes from county back to town.
Right.
And then we go back, so maybe, is there a grant?
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Name and street name.
From Franklin Avenue, Rich &amp; Cracker. So could we maybe look into like a grant, or go to the county? Because the sidewalk, you go all the way to the end of Franklin, but it's honestly supporting the kids and parents to the schools. So instead of going all the way to the end, if the elevation changes, then the way the landscape would work, it would maybe possibly be better to come in the back road of the school and run it all the way to the high school. And the school board and the county would be offering, then it wouldn't have to run all the way down to the end of Franklin, because there only, I mean, not Franklin, but Flower.
Yeah.
Big home, so. Because then it would be, I think it'd be easier if we could do sidewalks. I agree that we need the sidewalks for the schools, because it's coming right down into the hard road. And I think it'd also be a great spot for bike traffic if that's allowed, because Seahawk Road is not big enough as it is.
Right. And honestly, what you were just saying is something that I've thought about for a long time, the elevation where it goes up the hill.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
So we could come behind the schools, because it's going the back through the schools and the parents back to the town. So, amazing. Yes, people might also try to cut through the rural farms or the other side of the highway. But that's, I think we need to get the school board, get it engineered. I don't know how that works, paying to do all that. But it needs to be drawn up, drafted, two different ways, and it goes to the county and the school, and say, hey, who would like to propose this? Could you cover half of what's on your side, and put it, and then we cover the other half, and then, because you have to come across that county maintenance section, which you guys already paved that part of the roads anyway, so it sounds like you're already, from the bridge to halfway, as you said, county maintenance, and then it goes back to the town. So I guess that section of county maintenance, we're already maintaining?
Yeah, we don't take the county.
Not, not that part.
The side.
Right, right over, right where you're talking, right by the school section.
But we would start at the bridge.
Yeah, that's the county.
Yeah, that's the county current.
But we want sidewalks and stuff there.
That's what, that's what Jayden had just mentioned.
So we, so we would need the county to pay for parks, and the town to pick up and pay for the rest. But we also needed to go somewhere to the school. And it'd be nice to get to the middle school and the high school. But maybe not go on the roadside, maybe go on the backside of the fields.
Does that elevation and then that sharp corner?
Right, it's not grass, long way, it would just be concrete on the way, you know? I think we should look into the options of, sort of state funding, is there county funding?
So we actually, we have a grant that we've received from the federal government, not really received funds yet, but to evaluate pedestrians and bicycle traffic. So it all plays into like surveying where we need sidewalks, and hopefully have that Franklin.
Cool sidewalks.
Subconsciously, you were trying to get that out.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
One side of the, one side of the other, broadly is more important for now, to definitely get the sidewalks.
So they're placed in.
Because I'm at school, Franklin, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-39?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Please come up with a name and street name to know each other.
My name is Donald Snack. I live at 1065 Thio Flower Street. I've been reading for this map here, and the council made it, it looks correct. When you go out to Seahawk, make a right turn, come down Flower Street, once you get past the speed camera, you go, you come up out all the time, do a move, and wait a minute. Two. So I've, I've seen the TV, 25 over there, over. So I've, I've seen the TV, 25 over there, over the...
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-40, speed limit on Flower Street? Yes. Ms. Flattis, I saw Dog Park this weekend, I followed it. Every time I see a dog park, I leave this landmark. And I even look through signs to see how I could fund it.
Um, Dog Park, Seahawke, and, oh, uh, Dog Park. Uh, the thing that's interesting to me is nobody's talking about Seahawke. I say, Seahawke is terrible, okay? There's a, uh, Jeep flipped over two or three times on Seahawke last year, I think it was last year. I was amazed, I didn't see it. They were going so fast, they flipped over three, three times, it was in the paper, okay? So I'm wondering why Seahawke is not included in this speed...
It actually is. We actually have speed cameras already installed, the rate, uh, near the exit of the back parking lot of Stephen Dicker High School, so the cameras are actually there, um, we're actually waiting for them to be energized, and hopefully within a month, uh, or last week, and actually have both of those cameras, um, operational.
Okay, but no, the part that I'm talking about is when it goes this.
Right, and again, and again.
The cameras won't see down that part.
Right, we would back up to them. We only can control the areas with, or within town limits, and speed cameras themselves only can be within a half mile of the schools. So we have to have both of those problems, um, taken care of before we can take any action on that.
Okay, because down by the chicken place is terrible, like, we were going about 70 miles an hour.
If they're, if they're slower off the highway, hopefully they'll be a little bit slower when they get towards your way. Uh, one thing we know, if they start fast there, they'll continue fast when they get to your house. So hopefully we'll have some traction with, uh, both those speed cams.
The goal is to train, the goal is to train the driver to slow down. I mean, I, I can tell you, I know many of them right now who have realized, I need to slow my roll, really and truly. And I don't want anybody out there in Listonville or newspaper or whatever to think that this is the boy by the town of Berlin, so fat in our pockets. That is not at all what this is about. What this is about is point blanking. There is no reason for anybody to be driving on a 25 mile an hour, two lane street where the houses are literally kissing the street, there's no reason for anybody to be driving 55 and 60 miles an hour, and that happens down Flower every day. So, I mean, I know it's happening down your way by Seahawke and Mary's.
They just changed it to 40, they put 40 there from 25 from that school at the corner of Flower Street. That little school that's on the right hand side, they have 25 degrees.
Well, say so, sorry, that's the counter. You gotta, you gotta go to Phil Hill without me. If I had, if that was in our jurisdiction, believe me, I would, but that, that right there is the...
Going from, you talking about going from Flower Street, going down, going up?
Yeah, going to Seahawke.
You don't cover that.
Yeah, that's outside of town, Flower Street and Seahawke is the end.
It does begin, okay, I get it, I get it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flattis. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motions 2024-40? All right. We will take action by the council with hopefully the caveat of a letter. Will you approve the motion?
No, we'll have it.
So Vice President Correll made the motion to approve motion 2024-40 with a, with a letter to be sent to, uh, the county commissioners requesting that the other portion that remains on Flower Street be dropped from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. That summarize?
Yes.
And then, uh, seconded by Councilmember Nichols, all in favor say aye. All of those, let the record reflect that motion 2024-40 passed to the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah, can you make a note for the full draft? Uh, 4D, motion 2024-41, planning department consulting contract for FY25, and Town Administrator Mary Bolton, hopefully.
Uh, this is to basically get on the books, uh, the, oh, sorry, I was, I was writing and trying to get, my brain's starting to catch up, uh, to cover the contract for the ball for the first part of FY25 until we have a planning director in place, and just so that you are aware, he will, he will continue in some capacity for a while after that.
With the transition, do we have any comments or questions from the council?
Can you summarize the progress in trying to...
Uh, we have done initial virtual interviews, it's sort of a abbreviated interview form, we're just kind of introduce ourselves and let them introduce themselves.
Our initial, initial candidate pool is how many?
Uh, we, we, uh, we initially had six, we were going to interview, um, but we ended up interviewing five, we've now gotten it down to two, and they're coming in Thursday this week, uh, yes, this week, yep.
And then from there, hopefully a lot of recognition will be forward at our next meeting. That's the question.
Assuming that, uh, one of the individuals that we interviewed later this week does accept the position, I would still anticipate that we will not have something physically in place for power in these meetings.
Any other questions from the council? If not, we'll open up motion 2024-41 to the public for any comment or action. Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve, move to approve motion 2024-41. A motion by Councilmember Oris, second by Councilmember Mera, all in favor say aye. All of those, let the record reflect that motion 2024-41 passed to the council. Up next is agenda item 4E, motion 2024-42, authorization for Beacon, you know, business economic, uh...
Community center.
And, thank you. Uh, Beacon Community Center survey and related activities, I'm running point with the help of Vice President Correll, and, and, uh, this evening, which you have, uh, the motion is included in the packet as well as a summary of the work. You'll see that Beacon's the one that we contracted with to do, uh, the strategic plan. You'll see that they've discounted their services once again to be able to allow students to help work on this project. Uh, the total amount that we are requesting is, uh, not to exceed $3,425. That includes $2,875 for the project fees and $550 for incentives. We want to be able to, uh, get as many people to participate through the survey as possible. There's, will be a paper survey as well as a, uh, online survey, that will be open to anybody that wants to participate as far as pleading, so it'll be opened up and sent out publicly, and not restricted to just the citizens of Berlin. However, in order to get a chance to be able to win one of the $150 gift cards as the incentive, you would have to be a Berlin resident, living in the town of Berlin.
Municipally or community?
Municipally. It's Berlin money, if it's going to go as an incentive to somebody that should go, somebody that lives in Berlin. Uh, we certainly value the input of everybody that would potentially use a community center, uh, the design, the desire of this proposal is really to gain a sense of what type of amenities folks would like to see in, within a community center, and, uh, make sure that we're on track for the, uh, committee to help start working together with the design company. I do want to say that, uh, of the $3,425, a special thank you goes out to anybody that has a town of Berlin flag. Your contributions for the town of Berlin flag would cover, well, about 50% of the project costs here, so, with, um, small fundraising, but enough to, to get the ball rolling. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I guess it's a question. I'm using a microphone. Um, I'm not sure that we need to do the incentive gift card. Well, do we really need to do that?
Well, so, we went back and forth on that, and what I heard from this body last time was that the, the survey participation was a little low, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't run into that same challenge. With that, I asked John and Beacon how we can overcome that type of thing, and they said typically the best way to overcome that is by offering incentives, and, and/or doing more community listening and focus groups and stuff, which would change the pricing as well as stat time, and we would probably spend more than the $500, the $550 that are designed for incentives. So that's how we ended up arriving with that. It was a more cost-effective and, uh, prudent way to deal with it, with the consultants.
So, um, you know, we had, I guess, a couple months ago, we had that dream session, I call it, I'm not allowed, but there was, but everybody threw everything out, everything out, so, um, so the community center committee supports this direction, correct?
Yes, and the way that this would work is that we want to try and get this approved tonight, so that when we meet in August with the community center, we, the community center committee, we can start to really hone in on what type of questions will be asked, and then get that certain level, and so, and they coincide with an agenda item for our next meeting, which is hopefully to bring somebody along from our RFQ for design and service. So, it all, it's, it's all headed to the same.
Yeah, I don't think it's a lot of money, I think that's a favorable thing, I was, when I first saw it, I thought, oh, that must have been a cost, you know, frankly, um, because I felt like we, I felt like we had a pretty good feeling for what was wanted there, uh, but I definitely agree, you know, more being there for the better, and it's not a huge cost, especially if you're, like, or monkey paddle, that's a great thing too, so, um, yeah, my state guy to keep a rosy eye on it, saw the price.
Well, did you see the original price that you're...
Yeah, that's right.
I think something like this would cost us a lot more than we're earning.
It is absolutely encouraging that, that we gather this information from our public to ascertain what the public thinks, to ascertain what the public feels, and what they would like to see. And, and Beacon presents a scientific method of gathering this information, one that, one that will withstand the scrutiny of, of the government, so I think this is the way to go.
Any other comments or questions from the council before we open it up to the public? Okay? Any one from the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-42? I think Ms. Flattis, did you have your...
Yes.
Just if you don't mind coming forward, I know it's a...
No, I'm just asking a question, where is the Beacon Community Center? Where is...
So, it's the Business Economic and Community Outreach Network, thank you. Uh, they're at Salisbury University, they're part of the business school.
They're going to come to us, but they're going to come here to us. You don't have to go to Beacon, Beacon's going to come to you, and remember the survey to the town of Berlin.
And what we're, what we've talked about with Beacon too, as a way to help, I think when we included it in the utility bills, it kind of got lost a little bit, so we're going to do a direct kick out to them, and it'll do it everybody. Um, Ms. Carol, yes, you want to just come forward?
I just, really, I have a need to, uh, Carol Rose, Ian Drive, I just wanted to say that I'm 100% agree with Vice President Correll, his comments about how this will work if we do Beacon, I might, well, my, well spent money and, um, one, real quick question, that how many days are on your committee?
On the community center advisory committee? Uh, I think it's seven, and then we have some, and we invite folks to, that are maybe not part of the voting side, but want to just participate, so we have some folks that are on there as well, and like, attend meetings, uh, but I, I don't know the exact number off the top, I have, but I'd say around seven to 10.
I have a neighbor that's, that, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
And there are public meetings too, so anybody's welcome to attend. Yep. If we could, it's just, it's really hard to hear, so that's why I keep asking everybody to come forward. Gabe, do you want to come forward for me? Just name and street name with one of our fine members right here, Ms. Carol.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm getting from now, 304 Flower Street, uh, I'm in 514 Flower Street. I'm trying, I'm kind of confused now, you want the, uh, I'd like for you to explain it to me, maybe somebody in the audience might be, now, with the Salisbury State, you know, kind of just what the whole thing is going to be like.
Yeah, I thought it were done. It's a separate thing, this is, this is separate, so this, they would just be facilitating the survey, they would, they would help us compile it, to Vice President Correll's point, withstand scrutiny, and then they will push that out for us, take in the results, compile it, and then report it out.
That's only, only the community center?
Yes. Yep.
The other, the other work they did was a community survey, this is what a community center...
That's what was confusing, I was in the back, I couldn't really understand what's going on.
It's more for like amenities and like what type of things people want.
Yeah, putting the whole, putting the needle on the bone.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion 2024-42? Okay?
Motion to approve, uh, what is this one, 2024, 40?
So, a motion by Councilmember Nichols, the second by Councilmember Oris, all in favor say aye. All of those, let the record reflect that motion 2024-42 passed to the council. Thank you. Up next is agenda item 4F, Resolution 2024-02, moratorium on certain matters of the Planning Commission, Town Administrator Mary Bolton, Town Administrator, or Town Attorney David Gaskell, are going to run it.
Uh, at my request, David Gaskell drafted the resolution that is in front of you, um, and including in the packet was a memorandum of funding to you, and to chairs of the Planning Commission, Storage District Commission, and all of those. This would place a temporary moratorium, um, on the handling of final site plan approvals, resounding requests, and harmonization requests. And the purpose of this, obviously, is because we're a town planning chapter. Uh, this is intended to be temporary, the initial resolution carries until September 15, with the intent that it will be due to the first meeting of August, depending whether to extend it to October, and so, um, this is to, frankly, buy time and give staff a bit of a relief on having to approve what are very complex matters. I also want to make it clear that this is my recommendation, the Planning Commission discussed it, and if it was not in favor, then obviously whatever decision you make will be ignored.
The other point that I think is very important, it's in the staff report as well, uh, second paragraph that says to assist, uh, with these efforts and ongoing measure, filing deadline thirty days prior to any regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Work Commission was put into effect on June 17. Uh, this mirrors what Worcester County does as well, so we just brought ourselves in line with that, and it does give our team a little bit more time to be able to...
Correct. The thirty, and the thirty day, uh, filing deadline is intended to be permanent, there, as it was, we really didn't have a filing deadline, so theoretically the staff could receive documents just several days before having to put out the agenda back there, which was not necessarily sufficient time to, to adequate.
And there are certain items that do have a time constraint on when they need to be on an agenda when they need to do more something, so this solidifies that process.
That is somewhat a separate issue.
Right, yeah, because that's effective, so...
All right, so it took a part in June, but it's important to note that that is the process.
Yeah, I think that's a new set of eyes, kind of, I think that's, seems very appropriate in terms of, so, basically, who knows, that is in place now. So it's a moratorium conversation, um, which I brought up a month ago, um, and I wanted to hear the Planning Commission have said, so, uh, of course, we had technology, which, so I don't know exactly what they said, but I know that, that body appeared to be moving in the direction of, I guess, for a certain period of time, and then Mr. Baldwin spoke, and then everybody changed their minds. So you explain what happened.
I can't, and, and actually, you are correct, there was technology, which, but I think that the meat of that conversation was captured in a very short second, however, to reveal. Um, the discussion essentially was that with the thirty day deadline in place, the Planning Commission felt that that was sufficient, um, and then because of that, moratorium was announced.
So, so I have a couple of questions. Um, the way that it is, let me start with this, in the actual resolution, which I guess is...
In the actual resolution, which I guess is page 55, number one, down at the bottom, the moratorium is hereby placed upon action of the Planning Commission, it's for any and all occasions, for site plan approval, rezoning property, and colonization. So the last two, rezoning property and colonization, I want to say regardless of what they say, whatever the Planning Commission decides, those still come to us, to the body, and you're correct. So, so really, we're talking just site plan?
If, if the appropriate process is for them to be reviewed by the Planning Commission or Board of Appeals first, before it comes to the mayor and council, that's what we would put that, the moratorium.
And with the new, I know it's related but separate, with the new thirty day deadline, the way it's looking, and this is page 58, the meeting is scheduled, and I'm just looking at the Planning Commission and their final deadline dates. So for their August meeting, it's the 15th, for their September meeting, it's August 12th. And your recommendation is for us to review this in September, correct?
Well, to clarify, they, the Planning Commission will still continue to review concepts, they just won't, won't review final approval. So these deadlines apply no matter what. Anyone who wants to appear before those groups must submit whatever it is, there's submitted thirty days anyways, be it concept review or...
And I, I, I agree with you, I think that's important. In the current situation that we are in as well, what we're looking for, our planning director, perhaps we should throw this out, perhaps we should do our review that you recommend in, this is just for this, in maybe October. Because if we, we've already bought, the way I'm seeing this is, I don't want to have this, we've already attained a three month, because the thirty days started already. So if we are able to get a planning director in end of this month, they'll get here hopefully end of August, get them situated, you know, exposed to everything, acclimated that you need. And also, two-pronged approach, the Planning Commission could possibly have time to focus a little bit more on their comprehensive planning that they've been working on and maybe dabble in design stuff. I know that's a lot, but if we're having this thirty day, which is actually gonna be ninety in August, delay, they might go to look at some of these things. So that's where I was going with that part of this.
They may not start digging into how planning and design stuff is, it's a part of the process.
So then basically the comp plan discussion has just stopped?
It, it, it's on pause.
Is that possible? Oh, yes. All right. So taking those off, then it still stands that we have an extra month in June.
Essentially, yes.
So where I was going with that is, we're three people, maybe October, after we have a new director who's about to retire.
And, and here's the thing, you can, you can set a moratorium really for any period of time that you choose, because you can always believe it. Even if you set it for a year from it, you can lift it whenever you choose to. But that's daunting, that's, that would be discouraging to anyone who was interested in coming, which is part of the reason why it was shorter, more abbreviated times during the regular review was the...
And there's one, hold on one second. The objective is to be able to handle the complexity of these types of requests against the limited staff time that we have to be able to apply diligence to those requests. That's the objective.
Right. But we've done that with the three days.
No, we have not, which is why this is here, because you figure Rick does not work for the hours we have. So we do not have a full capacity in the planning office. Carolyn's working as hard as she can, Rick's working as hard as he can, we're just not here, Mary's helping, Kate's helping. It's really a team effort, but we don't have what we need to handle the complexity of someone gets your price.
Correct. So the entire purpose is just to give them the degree?
It is to bring in a planning director, to give them a chance to get onboarded and then restart.
Let's not forget that. Let's not forget that, that, that the public needs to know that their, their request, we would be handled consistently and thoroughly and put this in place would let everyone know, know that, that this is the way the town of Berlin is going. And it's not only because we do not have a planning director now, but you need to know, we present your plans, that, that four items will be handled with utmost skill and professionalism and consistency. And this would give us the opportunity to put that in place to, to better service our public.
Is there anything that is on the horizon that the Planning Commission feels is in, where this would not affect what's happening with Project Orville? Is there?
I'm not sure.
Is there? So if this goes into effect?
Can we turn those down a little bit? I think it's cool enough.
It is pretty cool, but maybe well spent.
I see, I see the star putting on.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Something jacket. Backer outfit, I did.
So I guess what I'm asking, what I'm asking is, if this were approved tonight, does it fall into like the twenty days effective date that an ordinance does? I believe that that's what it is? Is it immediate?
A resolution is effective immediately.
So does that, anything that has come already in concept, can it now not come in some, maybe?
If it was, if it was to be submitted as a final site approval, yes, this would put a pause on that.
So Wednesday night, the Microtel Hotel comes before the Planning Commission, the concept plan, whatever they do tonight does not stop that?
I would correct. I would think...
And if they want to come back the next month with a concept for anyone.
But what if they come?
Hold on one second. Hold on one second.
Wait, not yet.
Let's stop for one second. I think it's important to look at this from the workflow side of things and not about specific projects. We either enact this from a workflow perspective or we don't.
So I don't think it's just as workflow. I actually look at it as workflow, yes, that's a decent, but also concerns about, without a leader, that's experience, guiding the Planning Commission to be careful with perhaps discussion points, decisions that are made. Those are things that, that's kind of, that was the point with me going back to why we brought it up was that, but also, of course, going with the obvious help in the room, just that we don't have a planning director.
And to be completely clear, Rick Baldwin's assistance has been invaluable, but he is not the planning director. He cannot sign off on things. He, he gives me absolutely gold advice, but he is not the authority.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, we're agreeing, we're saying the same, we agree with the workflow, it's just about, I, I'm not cutting you off, sorry. But I, I mean, I think that we, I think that, I think September is just too early.
Say that again?
I think September's too early.
But can be extended.
So why don't we just do October? Give us the extra month.
That is, that is your, your decision.
If that's...
But to Mary's point, I think that September was chosen to be, to let folks know where we stand and to make them aware that it could extend, but we're trying to do our best.
Right.
Do we, do we know if September will be 100%? No. But is August likely? Probably not.
Right.
But it may extend to October, it may not. It depends on, do we break on?
I just think it is.
The latter of the first meeting, it would have to be convinced.
Right. Yes.
So I think, yeah, we want to be careful right with the, right with the time, because we, Roland is still open for business.
Yeah, absolutely.
But if we want to send a message that building permits, other things like that are not still going to get out to move in the direction.
What did Rick say?
We're the pretty girl of the dance.
That everybody wants to ask out, right?
So, yeah, we still ask.
We still want to be the pretty girl of the dance, so. I mean, that was Rick's words.
I know it was Rick's words, and I understand that, that, yeah. With a hot boy at the gym.
There you are, Mary.
Well, okay. We're...
We've now made it open to all. All right. So is there any further discussion regarding proposed Resolution 2024 dash 02? If not, we'll open it up to the public. Now we get to hear from the second student in the room. I won't, do a while, I already said.
For the record, Mark Spencer, proper, 6200 Coastal Highway, Squeak 200 Ocean City, Maryland. I'm actually here this evening representing two different developers who have projects in two completely different stages. So I'm gonna start with Carbite Enterprises LLC. Carbite owns a piece of property on the northeast corner of the intersection of Germantown Road and 113, part of the property zone R1, part of the property zone B1. On June the 10th, I submitted a rezoning petition to rezone the property to R4 to accommodate a townhouse development. That project is in its infancy. It's in the very beginning of the process. And my client and I are very sensitive to the situation the mayor and council finds itself in with the passing of Dave Engelhardt, which I do want to say for the record, very sympathetic, sorry for his passing. I consider Dave consummate professional and a good friend. And I'm sorry we're having this discussion, quite honestly. But with regard to Carbite, certainly a rezoning petition, as we have submitted, is a more significant matter than many others that come before the Planning Commission and the mayor and council. So the mayor and council is certainly deserving of and entitled to, as only administrator, planning director, to process such applications, provide staff reports, and give the mayor and council guidance and support regarding matters of that nature. Now, would I love to see the mayor and council come up with a way of addressing its concerns without imposing a moratorium? Absolutely. And I learned a lot in the past ten minutes. It sounds like you have two candidates possibly to fill the position. You hope to have the position filled maybe within thirty days? And if that's the case, and you have a thirty day filing deadline now for all matters that are coming before the Planning Commission, I don't know that I share the need to impose a moratorium that's being discussed in light of those two things. Once you impose a moratorium, right or wrong, it has a ripple effect through the community, the developing community, and interests of some to come and participate in development in Berlin. If that can be avoided and your interests are still protected, wonderful. I would love to see that opportunity exist without you finding it necessary to impose a moratorium, but we certainly understand the discussion. My second client is Mr. Tom Zambetta of the Microtel. And Tom?
Before we go to that, if you don't mind, Mark?
Yes.
To take the annexation requests, right? So, yes, sorry, resum, thank you. With a request like that, it typically comes here, then we refer to the Planning Commission. It would likely still end up on their agenda sometime in August. And that, and that would make it challenging for us. You see what I'm saying?
I understand. I, I would say in light of the circumstances, you could probably expect cooperation from my client while you're working through getting a new planning director. If you maintain the schedule you discussed here this evening, again, without the necessity of a moratorium. So I can assure you, there will be a level of cooperation that would be helpful. But I understand what you're saying.
I think we're still, we're still open. We still want to have those conversations. We still want to address some of our housing concerns, but we really need somebody, as you said, that can help guide us through those conversations.
Understood. That's why you don't hear me tonight on behalf of Carbite beating the Trump so loud, because we understand the predicament. It's an unfortunate predicament. But again, imposing moratoriums always has unexpected consequences.
I just wanted to see if you had an idea that we weren't thinking of.
No, I think we're pretty much on the same page. Now, switching gears to the Microtel. That project has been in play for an extended period of time. It has been before the Planning Commission on two prior occasions. There have been informal meetings outside of the Planning Commission proceedings. It is scheduled to go back before the Planning Commission Wednesday evening. It has been the desire and hope of Mr. Zambetta, if he could, to obtain site, final site plan approval Wednesday evening, but I understand maybe with some discussions with Ms. Boland, that was not how it has been placed on the agenda for Wednesday. I've not been part of those discussions, but regardless. This is a piece of property. This is a project much different than Carbite in that the project is in the town of Berlin, not Carbite as well, but there's no annexation required for this project. The property is already zoned for this use. Therefore, there's no rezoning or special exception required to facilitate this use. The, it meets the parking requirements of your code. The town of Berlin has sufficient water and waste water EDUs to accommodate this project. The most recent comments from the Planning Commission, and the only reason, to my knowledge, it hasn't received final site plan approval, is trying to satisfy the interests of the planning, various planning commission members on the elevations of what the building is going to look like. Mr. Zambetta has revised the plans on numerous occasions, trying to hit a very moving or non-existent target, because as you well know, the town of Berlin has never adopted architectural standards. Therefore, any developer that comes to Berlin wishing to get final site plan approval is also trying to unfortunately satisfy the varying and discretionary opinions of all its members of what a building should look like. As a side note, I would hope that if the town of Berlin wants to continue doing that, to adopt architectural standards so that developers know what is expected and know what the target is they have to meet. We don't know that today. But going to the meeting on Wednesday evening, it was certainly the desire of Mr. Zambetta to hope to get site plan approval. That gets us to the moratorium. It's one thing for me to come up here and support the concerns of the mayor and council on a project at its infancy, at its initial stages. Nothing could be farther from the truth here, and I think it would be patently unfair to Mr. Zambetta or anybody else in his position at truly the eleventh hour to pull this rug out from underneath him and say, we've imposed a moratorium, you're done until we decide otherwise. I would hope that whatever you all choose to do as a council will take that into consideration. And if anything, if nothing else, certainly grandfather his project, so he hasn't wasted the last year of his lifetime, effort, and money to at the very end of this project be put on hold. There are no remaining zoning issues here for which a zoning administrator or planning director needs to advise the Planning Commission. Dave Engelhardt was intimately involved in all the earlier discussions, the meetings with the Planning Commission. Again, there's no rezoning here and there's no special exception or variances here. Everybody knows the project. Everybody knows the land is zoned for this project. What we're trying to do now is satisfy the concerns of the Planning Commission members to make a building look a way that will garner a majority vote on the Planning Commission. So that being the case, I would hope you deem reasonable the request of Mr. Zambetta's. Don't throw him to the wolves here truly in the eleventh hour, because he's at the end of this process, not the beginning. So that would be our position with regard to the Microtel. Is that correct?
Your move is correct.
Thank you.
We share your urge to have design standards, which is why we put the funding for such in our FY25.
I'll be more than happy to draft them if you want.
And if you have a coffee laying around, we're, we're trying to get those things in order as well, so that folks can perform. Thank you.
I mean, I went through it with the county, I was intimately involved, but those standards were adopted. It's taken a while to get used to them, but...
We'll have grown pains, I'm sure.
I'm sure you will, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question. It's really for Mary. So Mary, you had stated that on planning, conceptual review, and you said you thought you were here for approval.
When I was involved in the discussions, these were discussions between Mr. Zambetta and Ms. Bowden, as I understand it correctly, if I'm wrong, you wanted to be on the planning commission agenda for final approval Wednesday, but that was not agreed upon. You're all for what preliminary approval, is that correct?
Yes, we, Tom Zambetta's, no address, just 113 Franklin Street.
There you go.
White Hotel. I'm an approved franchisee for White Hotel by Wyndham. And we've been in front of the planning board twice. We had a discussion off the record with three of the members, because they wanted to really dig into, with my architect who I flew out from Texas and head construction with Wyndham. So we can get and have open discussions, good hour and 45-minute discussions, where we hammered out a splash of Berlin, that's what Dave Engelhardt used to call it, a splash of Berlin. We have to have the downtown charm and flair to be brought to 113, because it is the gateway into the city. So we have come up with Victorian-style lighting, epes with simulated wood, with brick, with cornices. And you don't have to sell the.
Yeah, get back to Wednesday evening. What is it you requested with regard to Wednesday evening? And what you're on the agenda for?
So we were on the agenda for a preliminary, but because of the closed-door session, we cranked this out, and we have a full-blown set of plans, which was not approved, that this Wednesday, we would like to get final approval on this, everything that we had discussed. Because there are guidelines they created, and we alone, that we didn't create these, this look. So.
Just to clear up the record, there was not a closed session of the plan? I'm just correcting.
I do.
There's not a closed session of the planning commission? There was a subgroup of a couple of planning commission members, I think some folks from the roll team.
Yes, that's correct.
And our consultant that met together in the conference room.
With Rick, yes.
An informal meeting.
So they're looking for approval, but we haven't listed the concept review. How, how?
Because there are still items that are not ready for final approval.
That's, I, I, because I mean, I'm hearing.
I mean, I was not present at that meeting, and I cannot try to speak with the planning commission. But there are items that are still not at the final approval level.
So Mr. Zambetta, correct me if I mispronounce your name, I'm not trying to.
It's perfect.
What I'm hearing you say, what I feel like I'm hearing you say is, when you were put on the agenda, you were put on the agenda to have the discussion, but you were hoping to go beyond that, because you had already had a discussion that you thought was in-depth with the field of planning commission, part members and Rick. So you were hoping for this. But when you were put on the agenda, it was for the preliminary phase, or, right, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The preliminary phase was put on the docket prior to this meeting. So after this meeting, because, like I said, the architect flew in, construction came in, we all hatched out.
Assumed?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
But there are seven members on the planning commission. There were only three at this meeting. So you can't say that this has been teed up for final approval, because a majority of the planning commission members weren't at that meeting.
Agreed, and it was discussed to have not the quota, to have less than the quota.
Correct. So let me say this one, because Mr. Gasol's correct. Regardless of what got discussed at the informal meeting, and regardless of how it's on the agenda for Wednesday night, clearly, this project is near its end, not its beginning. And if the mayor council are inclined to impose some type of moratorium, I would hope that you would see fit to grandfather this project, so it could move forward to get final approval, if not this Wednesday night, at the next meeting. If not, this project should get put on hold for months. And under the circumstances, I just don't think that.
May I ask another question? We've been, we're talking that this is possibly in its final stages. What timeframe, when did we start the conversation? When did we officially start this project conversation? Do you know the date mark?
I have it.
Well, in that.
Well, not a hope, but wish a prayer.
No, 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 no. It's not, it's on January 24th, after 4th of July 2023. We have 90 days worth of work, huge amounts of homework assignment, as I call it.
Was that the begin, was?
That was the beginning, yes.
So that was about a year ago, when the initial meeting with Dave Engelhardt began. And then the first meeting with the planning commission was March the 13th. There was a follow-up meeting with the planning commission on May the 15th. The informal meeting Mr. Zambetta's talked about was on June the 3rd.
With Dave, when they, when he, when they had the conversation?
Yes.
Oh, oh, the one that you had with the planning commission, that was during 2024?
Right. And then the next meeting would be Wednesday evening. So it's been in the works for a year, with two formal meetings of the planning commission, one informal meeting with certain planning commission members and Mr. Zambetta's team. And then this next meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday. So in a perfect world, even if this Wednesday's meeting is preliminary only, other than the moratorium, he could be back on the agenda of the planning commission very quickly for a while. But that won't happen if the moratorium goes into effect.
Right, because right now, we're not in a perfect Berlin.
That's right.
We're not.
But Mark, this is a two-month moratorium. It's not six months, it's not a year. So it's not unreasonable to allow some time to get perhaps more. And that's what this does.
I understand.
Well, and that, to go along with what Jay just stated, that was the reason why I asked when the process began. And I mean, I understand, and I'm not taking away from the beginning of the concept, because I mean, like the beginnings of anything, when we're thinking about something, when we want something to happen, of course, we have an initial conversation, but the official beginnings, and I'm not drawing you hairs here, but the official beginning is March, right? Dave says, right, exactly. So we're talking March. As Jay just stated, from March to July, we're looking at, what's that? Three months?
Three or four.
Four months.
Four months, four months. We're asking for grace, two months, because, I mean, we're not in a, truly, we're not in a position, the planning commission, and I'm going to speak and say this out loud, the planning commission, without a true head, is not in a position to say yes or no right now. I don't believe so, do you? Honestly?
But I think it's also reasonable, if this was passed tonight, to believe that your project would be one of the first items that our new planning director and their team would, would be working with. Do we think you would start back at square one? Probably not. And if you have a good meeting on Wednesday, hopefully, you're teed up for when we bring this new person in, to put you right on the agenda with some consultation there. Is that reasonable to believe by this body?
There's also, there's nothing in this resolution that prohibits the submission of final site plans, but it won't go to the planning commission for action.
So the meeting went on Wednesday.
But we're not at final site plan approval.
Not, not at this time.
That, there needs to be a meeting, the monitoring. You said, you said that the project is nearly in. Our planning commission says that, that they're ready to review preliminary plans. And, and as far as we're concerned, those plans that are going to be submitted on Wednesday, have submitted, are preliminary plans. Because your project, according to our planning commission, has not progressed to the final approval stage. Now, this high meeting with the, the members and, and the guy from Texas, that may have been a very productive meeting, but it is the responsibility of the planning commission to determine when things have progressed enough for final approval. And the way I'm understanding it, that has not happened.
And not just the planning commission, but with a formal head to actually bounce this off of, to have these real, select, or better term, educated conversations with, I mean, because that's not us.
We put forward Carolyn. Well, any other comments or questions for this room? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take any other public comment regarding motion 2024-02, Ms. Rose? Just name, street name, and, thank you.
Carol Rose, 307 And Drive. I believe that this statement you make this evening is extremely important. I implore you to, Dave, for this moratorium, think of citizens of this town that have elected you to represent our interests, not interests of people from other places that may want to come to the advantage or say what the, please, please, please think about this. It is extremely important to have a real quick month, two months, whatever, reset, please. I think if they are allowed to have their hearing Wednesday, there will be folks there that do actually have questions now that the final plans have been sent out in the pack, and I, I think that having a break of moratorium will be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Thanks, Julie. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor council regarding resolution 2024-02? Just name and street name if you don't mind.
Dave Purnell, 514 Floward Street. I was at that meeting of the planning commission, the last meeting, and I'm very concerned about how the process went. I don't know whether all of you council, mayor council are aware about how it went. I think it was not to the best interest of the people in this town. And here's how it went. You aware that you had three of the planning commissioners work with the developer? Right? I'm answering a question. I wasn't at the time. Okay. Now, look at that situation. To make the project work, now, the appearance, as far as I'm concerned, is a conflict of interest. Now, if it's not a conflict of interest, it's setting a very bad precedent, right or wrong? Question, can I get an answer?
Well, I'll just tee off on that. And I think that the town of Berlin has embraced a subcommittee approach, where we put up the small work groups that work with folks. But I understand the appearance of it, and I believe, you know, that the issues that really have arose over this matter has been, well, the aesthetics of it is one. Number two is transportation to downtown, and then the neighborhood in the area not wanting that in their backyard, frankly. So I don't know what happened in that meeting, and so do I think, I hear what you're saying. I do believe that the intentions were for these three planning commission members to work with the developer, to come up with a design, because they were going back around and around over what it should look like. And I think this matter of whether or not that had to be there is another separate matter, that's a zoning issue too. But I believe that that work group, you know, again, I was not aware of that till tonight, but was to work with the developer to get a concept to come back toward the public where they could, at least three of them could stomach the design of it. I mean, that's what I'm just going to say.
Well, you think it's a good precedent, because everybody, you know, we got people coming here all the time with projects, and they can't get it through, and then, okay, well, planning commission sit with us to make it work.
I understand the appearance of that.
Now, is that true?
Well, see. Hold on one second, I have a question, just one moment. I, I understand what you're saying, but, yes, well, you can say the same thing. It happens across all of our, from this level to the boards, commissions, committees. Subgroups do meet periodically with folks that may have certain things that might come before them. So I understand.
Once you do what you do for one, you should do for all.
We, we do embrace that.
Because, I mean, discrimination takes place all the time.
Right.
So all I'm saying is, it's not good. It puts the citizens like me and the rest of us, and they're nothing to do with it. It puts us in a bad position. To me, it's not good representation, period.
Councilmember Nichols?
May I? So, so when we do this, going back to where, even where Steve stated a minute ago, then every entity that mix up this town of Berlin, all of our groups and subgroups, and either mayor and council divided into smaller groups to meet with entities. But this is where the rubber meets the rubber. Before the final decision is made, that subgroup is given the opportunity, and they come back and have that discussion with all the parties and entities. It should never, ever, ever be assumed that because you've met with that subset, that is the, of the green light for the entire entity, because that's supposed to be a meeting to discuss. They're supposed to bring that back to the table, everybody discuss openly, open communication, open communication this way as well, and then a decision being made. So what I'm feeling right now, and maybe this is where you're going with this, and tell me if I'm wrong, after that subgroup meeting with the developer and their architect, that small group of, of folks were supposed to come back and have that discussion with their entire body. And that is what was supposed to happen tomorrow, correct? So you jumped ahead, is what I'm thinking. And if, and if what, I don't want to put words into your mouth, but what, if what I feel that I'm saying is what you're conveying as well, you're, you're skipping steps. You got to follow, we all, we're supposed to set these steps for everybody. So even if your architect came in from out of town, and you met with those folks, and you felt you had a good understanding, it means that something needs to meet with the entire body, a discussion had, and then open to the public before we move forward. That's how it's supposed to happen.
Well, let me just say something.
And that's how it's teed up then.
Well, Wawa.
I want to make sure that the, that the developer understands.
Yes, but that, you might have something there, because we haven't gone through the whole process. But Wawa, for example, they had the same issue. They had the same issue. Now, the planning commission didn't set up and say, well, listen, we will take, we will sit down with you and come up with what we feel would work for its design.
But I would say that Wawa questioned that, the planning commission.
But Mary, Mary, Wawa did get that.
They did.
Oh, did they? Wawa did get that. The exact same thing.
They got three cans in this.
Well, I don't know the quantity, but they did meet with some planning commission members and.
I mean, I don't like the way it's being done. I'm going to say to me, that, that, to me, it puts the developers evidence, grannies that they don't need, number one. They got plenty of money. Plenty of money. We letting them come in, like you said, come into our community, and yet, we give them the advantage? To me, something's wrong with the picture.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address? Yeah, but hold on, the process, you got to come up to your names.
I just want to know his address, and then hear his address meet.
Okay.
Oh, I gave him my address. I'll, I'll.
Would you like to come up and comment? Anyone else that would like to come up and address the mayor council regarding resolution 2024-02? Seeing none, we will take any action or further discussion of the council.
Move to approve 2024-02.
Turn of motion by Vice President Morel to approve resolution 2024-02 as submitted.
Second.
A second by councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record. Okay, let the record reflect that the vote was unanimous, uh, with all councilmembers pressing.
Nice to be back, ladies and gentlemen.
For all.
First meeting of August, eleven ninety.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Dave, for your work on that. Up next are items for discussion. Item number five, uh, five A is an extension of the Berlin Farmers Market through October. And our economic community development director, IG Wells, is gonna run the point.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, thank you.
Uh, I am here to request the extension of the Berlin Farmers Market to run through the month of October. The, uh, the farmers have actually extended their season. They now, uh, they have greenhouses, they're doing, um, a variety of things to extend their season. And I would like to request the farmers market season be extended through October.
Was there any discussion concerning the length of time and extending the, um, time by an hour?
Pardon?
To make it close at two.
Oh, right, yes, there was. Unfortunately, the, what happens around noon, a lot of the farmers have run out of their crops and they're, they're, um, they're looking to get out of there and the heat is a little bit much for them.
What, um, so going into, going into October, uh, we have Saturday events. So does this, what effect event does this have on?
Rain day?
Staffing, um, setting up, tearing down, overtime, working out, how does that, what does that go about?
So, well, there is an additional cost, obviously. Uh, the, the grant funding that we received for live music was only extended through September. So we will be funding the, uh, the music for the month of October, um, as well as the petting farm. And we need to continue the advertising, so there is going to be an additional charge.
And as far as the setup and breakdown, you have a market manager to assist with that.
Correct, correct. We do, we have him, oh, actually, we have a new, we just hired a new market manager for Sundays and they have, uh, um, said that they would be delighted to be able to work through the month of October.
Who is the lead? That would be funding the musician.
The, the town, it'll, it'll come out of my budget.
The job, Public Works.
Oh, 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 right, right, for the musician, but everything else.
It'll be coming out of the part-time crewing of, in the Public Works. And that person will be just simply for the farmers market. Then we'll have our other crewing, our Public Works crew for any event, like we normally do.
So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, which I could be, isn't there the classic car show on a Saturday and is there Oktoberfest on a Saturday?
Probably some of that. So, so the, there is no rain day for the car show, the cruisers, Berlin cruisers? And, uh, last, last year it did rain during Oktoberfest and we made it work. We had a contingency plan in place. We did not utilize a rain day for that event.
We have events in May too, that, we have Saturday events and then farmers market event. So it's, it's, uh, there is co-events that go through all the weekend.
So how far in October through the?
Through the, the last Sunday in October.
So the vendors, they pay a fee, right?
Correct.
They pay a fee through September.
Correct.
It's, their willingness to, I guess what we're assuming, I'm assuming we wouldn't be charging them extra for the extra month?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Why don't we pilot it this year? See how it works out for October? The cost is, is not.
It's not that much. It, it, it's really not.
That's all.
And then if it works out, then we'll factor that in with the grant application for next year. We'll factor that in with the fees for next year. But this could be a pilot year.
Tell me why we are considering this?
Uh, the council member, Nurb, brought it up. We had, we, we, we always toyed.
It's great that you're on it here, gentlemen.
You wanted it. You were a keeper. Scott's member, Ira, who announced requested it. I, I was not in, I was not in attendance at that meeting, but I was watching and I did hear the, the question. And historically, we, we, ah, historically, we, we ran the farmers market a little bit later and what we found is while everybody wanted it, the people weren't there. That their, the attendance wasn't that great at the farmers market when we extended it. Um, we're, we're a resort town, so a lot of the, the people, there's a lot of locals that support the farmers market, but you, you need that additional, uh, capacity.
Jay is gonna wear a sign.
Pardon?
Jay is gonna wear a sign and flip an arrow.
Right. So, so I, 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 I believe that maybe we, it, it took a while just to extend it through September and September isn't that busy. And, and you'll see that as September approaches. It's not going to be that busy with, with people. And now that we're extending it through October, while everyone wants it, I'm not quite sure that the same amount of people will come. I hope that I am incorrect.
I was about to say, I think you are not selling yourself.
I know, I, I, I know, I'm not trying to do it. So I'm being, I'm just trying to be real here. I, I love the farmers market, it's my favorite thing. Everyone loves the farmers market, they look forward to it. It's, it's the highlight of, of the week. And, and I would love to be able to extend it just to see, maybe, maybe this year is different. May, maybe more people will come this year. I, I certainly hope so. I know that the farmers have additional crops, the vendors, they want to be there. Everyone wants the farmers market to continue. Let's see who shows up.
I can tell you this, the merchants were real happy.
Oh, right, I know that merchants are, the, the, I know that merchants are very happy. The merchants would love to have an event every single weekend and close the streets. I know this, but.
I know this too.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe we, I, 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 I get requests for events in this to close the street on at least once a week from a variety of, of people to close, to, to have an event.
Do we need to do anything?
Uh, but you always have to remember the law of economics, the rule of scarcity.
Do we need to do anything else with the closing route, just letting state highway down?
Yeah, that's it.
I forgot all of that.
You, you said, um, the costs associated with the extension would be nominal. Do you have any idea of how much that would be?
It's, it's going to be approximately a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars?
For the month.
Does that include staff?
No. Yes.
So how much staff?
Oh, no, no, that includes staff.
How much staff dollar? Figure, how much do you think you're gonna spend in your part-time budget to cover this?
It's, it came out to around fifteen hundred.
Right, so about two thousand, five hundred, three hundred, three thousand dollars. So.
All in a certain additional. And that's with, yeah, and that's in my budget with the summer help. And there's, uh, then, s- crewing for events, I have an overtime budget also. So the crews, staff, come out of that. But the part-time, it's part-time listed as part-time farmers market in my, um, lineup.
Well, this puts you in a jam coming into the spring of next year.
Uh, our summer help doesn't, with school not opening, school not closing till June this year, our summer help didn't start till June seventeenth.
So you're saying from a budget perspective.
But I don't think so.
Well, I just, I discussed this with Jimmy prior to making this presentation to, to ensure that it would be okay in this, in this fiscal year.
All right, all questions answered?
Jimmy John's school always closes in June.
All right.
Do you need guidance from us as to which way we would like to go?
Oh, right, there's, uh, when I spoke about this with Mary, there's no official, I just wanted to get your stamp of approval.
Is it my, my consensus?
I say let's do it.
My consensus, piloting October? Do you want to bring it to a vote or you just want to? I just want to.
Okay.
Share the rest. All right. So you're good, thanks, honey.
Thank you. I, 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 I hope everybody's happy. I hope we, we do receive the same response.
It's okay, we're not gonna. I mean, this is the thing, every week is still, it's, it's very, you know, it was very, I think every week is there the farmers market. It's, so I'm looking forward to trying it out soon.
Thanks.
All right, up next is gen item. Yes, maybe you can.
I'm looking forward to it personally. Thank you. Because I'm hoping that the farmers, as they bring their autumn wear, will spice it up, quote unquote, just the time you spend for fall, you know, to bring out the, the gourds and the pumpkins and.
There's gonna be a lot of pumpkin spice everything.
Exactly, not just that, but you know, Cody will add, add a little extra spice rum or whatever those things are that the folks do, the cakes, the whatevers. I think it'll be a great addition, having that extra for me.
I was really looking forward to the hour. Because, um, very seldom, ever do I get to attend on Sunday because I'm in church. And church is usually over one.
What time does it begin? What?
Which group? They're talking.
Ten. Mark, you guys, you did early.
Are you there early to get the good stuff anyway?
Are we ready to talk about that part yet? Are we?
I was trying to progress and then you said you wanted the board. So I was gonna let you have your.
I'm ready to get to the part where we can have comments because I have to comment about hours. You can say that now or do I want to try and do that?
What, what do you mean, as far as the farmers market part?
Yes.
Oh, I would like to move on to item B, so if you have anything else for item A, please go ahead.
No, I'll wait until I have my comments.
She got comments.
I do.
Council comment.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so, thank you, Ivy. Uh, up next is gen item five B, the sale of Karen Park, parcel fifty seven. So with that, uh, in the packet, you'll see an overview of the timeline. Just to go over, uh, the, the flow, uh, there was an advertisement that went out in our public meeting packet, through our public meeting packet, that said that we were gonna have this conversation, uh, tonight on July eighth. Uh, tomorrow, summarizing our conversation this evening. Uh, that will be shared with folks that are interested or have previously expressed interest. Uh, those folks are up, uh, on the top end of that email that you see there that went to the group. Uh, with that, it'll also be summarized in a press release that'll go live and hopefully disseminated through some of the, the local newspapers. And then, uh, the goal would be to have a cutoff date for submissions to Stephen by July sixteenth so that those presentations could be included in the packet. Uh, the public meeting packet for the twenty second would then be released probably on Thursday, July eighteenth. And then, uh, the discussion and presentations would take place on June twenty, or July twenty second. With that, uh, the folks, uh, we would like to provide a little bit more clarity to folks for the, um, discussion that would take place on the twenty second. So I want to review the, the discussion points we had in June with everybody and see if we can kind of box these in a little bit more. The sale or proposed sale or presentations would only include parcel fifty seven. The approximate number of E D U's that would go along with that sale would be about fifteen sewer E D U's only. The asking price for would be one point two million dollars. The submissions would, uh, include projects or, um, and, uh, businesses that do not compete with downtown, uh, or Berlin businesses. No restaurants, no retail, uh, nothing that's currently in downtown. And let's see, we're open to healthcare, general office space, gyms, housing, entertainment venues, and a skate shop. Each presentation would be capped at fifteen minutes, uh, and, um, it would be in public and that we have asked for a leave behind. What type of leave behind would we need or could this, uh, the submission in the packet be enough?
Well, didn't you say no retail residential?
It said housing.
But then you said yes to housing.
Oh, I thought it said.
No, you said yes to housing.
I thought, I thought housing was a yes, I'm sorry. Based on our conversations.
Why, how did you say no residential and say housing?
Well, I, I think.
Did I say no residential? If so, I did not intend to say that. I meant to say no restaurants, no retail, nothing currently in downtown. And then we're open to healthcare, general office space, gyms, housing, entertainment venue, and a skate shop.
Right, but if he said no housing, why would we have the tally on the table?
I didn't intend to say no housing, so if I did, I would have done. The, is the leave behind that we noted that we would like to have, can we have whatever submitted in packet as the leave behind? That's fine, right? They don't need to print binders or stuff.
Don't we leave?
Well, we don't need binders.
So whatever they submit to Stephen for inclusion or packet will be.
It needs to be full of whatever they want.
Should be all announcing. All right, and present your proposal of one point two or in excess thereof? Okay. Sarah, can you take notes and we'll compare?
Uh, one point two million.
Okay. Then there was a question that Natalie had, which was, what's the urgency to sell? Um, and then I think there was a discussion of light and burden, and those were the two, uh, comments that I have there. My question to all of you, if those points are intact, I want to know, how do we, how do we make this so that we don't recreate what we had last time? Like, what can we do to make this process better for us and better for those that we're asking to come and present?
I think we find the parameters of what we're looking for in our proposal. And we all agree with that.
I did not have notes really in hand. I mean, I'm not against.
Well, I mean, I just assume with the tally on the table, that's.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. When you have housing, more like mixed use.
One at a time, one at a time. What's the question?
I'm very interested in housing.
Verden.
Not less than housing.
And I would like to present to the group that, that, um, that, um, yes, the primary focus is fifty seven. But, but as long as the space for, for the skateboard park is reserved, could not, could not be, we give leeway or, or, uh, or give exception for an individual that, that, that would like to present a proposal for, for the Antarx.
You also. To the Public Works, is that what I'm being?
Yes, yeah, well, well, I.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Now, the, the only challenge with that, the back is lagoons of park space. We discussed that's not, nothing's gonna happen with that. Is that still everybody's understanding? And then we talked about four ten and one ninety one. As Mary noted, they include a public works facility, a skate park. I received a similar question from one of the five that were noted in the email. My response to them was, we don't really know where they're gonna fall and what the remaining area would look like. And that would probably be something that we would revisit at a later date.
I just think, I just think we are limited in proposals by, by not, not, not adding more. And, uh, 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 that's just what I think.
Okay. What, uh, Steve, did you have a comment?
I, I think it was about the housing, I think it was, um, I think, because when I was thinking about housing, I was thinking about a mixed use type of project with housing on the second floor or something like that. Maybe not exactly like, um, single family homes. But of course, that's, I'm open to, that's my, my way. There'd be no limit on any uses. Let's see what comes out. I've felt that way all along, just as a capitalist, and I just do not really agree with interfering with private business. But, um, I'm one of, one of the team, something that we all agree on. So, uh, no, the housing, I was just thinking, I was thinking more of mixed use housing on the second floor of the, um, the back parcel of the property. Um, what we don't know is if I was to keep what's left, you know? I'm interested, so interested to hear when they see this thing. I mean, right now, it's like, it was terrible, but, uh, soon, at some point, soon it's gonna look better. Um, but I'm really interested to hear, you know, when they, when they see what they see now, do they have a new vision? Or is it gonna be the same proposals that we've seen before? Um, so, that, that was, but, but that's the housing, I was, that's all that's, that's the issue.
I really, um, I really, I thought the purpose of this discussion tonight was to narrow the focus on fifty seven. Because what, the path that we went down before was we didn't know what we wanted and we had people bring us stuff and we couldn't agree because we didn't know what. And I thought we were trying to narrow the focus, if you will, to what we were looking for, which was the, you know, no re, no retail, looking at healthcare, skate park, with the, oh, entertainment venue. If. If we are going to go down the path of adding to the skate park parcel and adding to the public work parcel at this particular time, we're really just going right back around to how this started two and a half years ago. So, I'm the one that brought it up. You know, with the team, and I just don't want us to, I fear that we are sliding back into what we didn't want to have happen before, or what did happen and we weren't ready.
I guess back to how I started the question, how do we prevent us from not redoing what we did last?
Do we, well, let me circle back. Do we have a report from the demo comment that I hadn't even heard about my chance? I know they were...
I did get a report, it was, you know, exactly, I got it very late today, it wasn't exactly what I was looking for. Fine. I mean, you can, you can look at it and see how, how far, they are proceeding as expected at this time. Their contract ending is, it's either, it's either August fourth or fourteen, and they are on track.
And I think the best summary we can provide to folks as to what they expect at this present time is two separate buildings. Like, if you go there and you look at the two buildings, we expect to have two separate buildings that will have no debris around them when we are done. I think that's a reasonable understanding.
Yeah, and I think also just to keep in our minds, that's what four hundred and two thousand dollars got.
I have a question.
Yeah, can we hold on for just a moment if you don't mind?
Well, I guess that's, that's what I have to say right now.
I would just like to say, I'm in a state, fifty-seven being, being the primary focus, but, but if we get a proposal that includes more than fifty-seven, and something we can live with, I, I think it is incumbent upon us to hear the proposal.
And I will, I will say that I think focusing on fifty-seven right now, at least in my mind, I'm just throwing out where my mind's at on this. I don't want something that I want to live with. I want something that we're excited about. I want something that's really going to fit Berlin, that's got some energy around it that fits our needs, puts us back on the tax rolls, uses the demo funds the way that we said we would use the demo funds, gets somebody occupying those spaces to restart commerce in that, in that building and those buildings, and then hopefully something that we can leverage. Jimmy's looking at building a public works facility, we're looking at getting a skate park back there. We're going to need a road. It's not going to be Steve's highway that he wanted in the beginning, but we're going to, we're going to need a road, and I, I think there are some ways that we can leverage some of that, but we've got to have something to point to. Right now, we've got rubble. It's not going to get us very far. And I'm really interested in moving this forward, but I think we need to spend the time tonight, yes, it's a little late, but we need to spend some time tonight figuring out what we want, because we're going to ask folks to come see us in two weeks, and they need to be able to prepare.
We also need to sell less than three, potential without, this is sold as is. No more demo work to be done in my town.
Yeah, we don't have any more money to give you.
No more work. It's sold as is.
As is.
Jimmy, to clarify the issue of EDUs.
Well, fifteen sewer, right?
Yeah, that was on the list.
Are we in agreement, agreement to fifteen sewer EDUs convey?
A sewer EDU is about thirteen thousand. Is that right?
Twelve thousand, some change.
So, so let's articulate that. So, you'll get Sarah the exact amount of, of the value of a sewer EDU. We will put in the press release that is going to go out to everybody, that fifteen sewer EDUs will convey, and the value of that. Is everybody in agreement? Councilmember Nurr, yes. Councilmember Nichols, yes. Councilmember Green's a yes. Councilmember Horace is a yes.
Yes, but I would be willing to...
Okay.
I would just like to say that we probably ought to get it on, and I've come to the agenda to take the formal action to sort those EDUs out. Just get that done.
And if, if you want to do that in the same meeting or the first one in August, I think that's fine. We also have asked, shouldn't we, we need to have some legalese applied to the fact that their presentation would still allow them a due diligence period if accepted and all that? Can you figure out what that caveat should be?
Well, I mean...
That gives us time and them time?
Nothing, nothing's, nothing's lasting until there's a contract.
Right.
So, I mean, if you, we get a presentation, five or six different presentations, you guys are focusing on one or two, I mean, we don't have to have legalese in that. It's only when we decide this is where, this is where we want to go, and then it'll be a negotiation period.
Which will not going to be two years.
No, no. I, I don't think we need anything for next meeting.
But next meeting's presentations, it's safe to say that it is not binding. It is a presentation that will hopefully lead to somebody into, into an extended negotiation period that is not extended.
Rather brief. You might have it on the agenda as presentation items, you, you probably don't want to try to make a motion and prove it.
Not that same item, no. But we would be looking to revisit this in, in August. I don't want, there would be a long delay here.
Do we need to adjust the rear footprint line to something?
Yes, I would like to see the rear setback, and I've, I've discussed this with all of you before and publicly. I'd like it, the rear setback to be where the lot line is for one-ninety-one, because that's the, yeah. So, the lot line for one-ninety-one is basically the chingling fence. And then if they wanted to do something behind that, maybe there's an exception for an entertainment venue, maybe there's not, but not a huge building back there where we want to have a park. I think so.
David, sorry, is that taking a lap off the parcel?
Yes.
In essence, yes.
I guess we need to know exactly how much.
That's, that's just a, sprayed with lab on it, Google Word or something.
How far is that?
I've only looked at it as a set, but not really picked it out.
Yeah, that's why I get a little bit concerned about that, if we're taking, depending on how much it is, if it's two hundred square feet or something like that, but...
But my concern also is not, in some ways, I'm arguing against myself here, we're going to build a public works facility that's a little bit further back, but I just don't want to take away from the park. So I think we need to have a discussion about what that setback looks like. My, my initial thought is a lot line, rear lot line, one-ninety-one, but I'm open to negotiating.
So, surely, I don't agree on one point two million dollars?
I agree.
About fifteen EDUs at approximately thirteen thousand, that's a hundred and ninety-five thousand of value, but I agree that, well, everybody should go with the sale. So anyway, that's that. We're agreed that fifteen out of the demo.
If they want more, they buy them. Fifteen will come down.
Then all comes down to uses, right?
Correct.
That's the point of proposal.
I have here that housing is a high priority to incorporate in the project. Steve noted potentially on the second floor. Everybody agree that if we can incorporate housing, we'd like to do that?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yes, mixed use, yes.
Yeah, mixed use. Mixed use.
Now, can we whittle down these, because really, if I looked at this and I saw open the healthcare, general offices, gyms, housing, entertainment venue, and skate shop, no restaurants, no retail, begin to be like, Steve, what do you want?
Well, not just Steve, that's like, that was the...
That was the whole, the whole mindset.
Right, so how do we solve that? Do we take it to Steve's approach, so?
Well, we can't open...
Here's a door. Okay. So then how do we constrain that?
That's so cheap. I mean, a salon, do you nice fit in there?
Yes.
Well, if you've got that down there.
Approaching...
Potentially, private property across the street, that's not to have that. So, that's where I'm like, I, I say, let the strong survive.
And you don't know what else is going to be developed on that street that could potentially compete with downtown?
I guess, yeah. I mean, I, I don't, of course, they don't hurt downtown, you know? I just, it's so, it's so tough for me to be so restrictive, same conversation with you last summer. So, they're all, so do we need to think about that right now? How, you know, like...
That's why I say, but if I have a grocery store, how hard is it?
How about just discussing uses we don't want? Because if there's, like you said, if there are limitless uses out there...
What are our hard no's?
I mean, our perspective is not that, Bob.
Is a restaurant a hard no?
What's our hard no?
Chicken quails.
Seafood processing.
Chicken slash any processing plant.
You got a little better than me.
Okay, what are our other hard no's?
Is a restaurant a hard no?
Also, probably is for me.
I thought that that was the biggest catalyst here, was that, that was the, the restaurant would have been a direct competition with Restaurant Alley, AKA Main Street Berlin. I mean, and I'm not baking here when I say that, but there are a lot of restaurants.
I don't see nothing. The issue of all that, except for limited, to purchase solely to fifty-seven, is fine with me. And also, I agree with, with what Steve is at, we don't know what's out there, you know, we sitting in here with, with this...
These blinders on, we don't know everything, we don't, we don't know...
Well, I didn't know what your hard no's are, that's all I want. What's your hard no?
So how about a hard no, a storage store?
I'm down.
Yes, I'd say hard no to that.
It's, it's the group, they're, they are moneymakers, see them all over.
Which are objectionable.
Can we do better? So I'm also, you know, if we can't do better, then, you know, that's what we, I would hope that it's not on the highway front.
How about that? We put that at the bottom of the list, that would, not even a hard no, but that would be a, that's the last resort. Can we say that?
Well, the way that my brain thinks about it too, is how do you leverage it? And when I say leverage it, you think you can sell, sell a streetscape to D H C D for storage?
No.
You think you can sell a streetscape to Jake and his team with something that's got some energy around it?
No. So, if you remember with the demolition grant, the demolition grant was specifically for the future use for economic development.
Yes.
Well, we can sell a streetscape with some energy, like, it's got to have some, a project with energy around it, and then we can go back and say, look at what we did with your money before, look at what we want to do with some more of your money. But storage is not going to cut it.
That's why Steve's fine on issues.
I agree. So, I, I was asking about hard no's, and a hard no, you're not going to get a whole lot of appeal over storage.
Throw some stuff, because your skate was a bit broader than ours, what were you going to say?
Economic development.
Less, less on the what you want, I want to hear what you don't want.
That's what I said, what you don't want. No, no storage, right?
I want to hear from the economic development.
So, what's interesting is, so we're having this discussion about what you want and what you don't want. You have a list of about one, two, three, four, five, plus more, who have an interest in what they want to pitch. Mixed use development is, is my, in my opinion, the best use for that property, where you, you get to include housing, you include retail, restaurant, and services. It's retail, restaurant, the first floor, services, the second floor, and then housing on the third floor. Whatever you do in Heron Park is not going to compete with downtown. We've, we're competing with Ocean City and West Ocean City. Downtown Berlin does pretty well for itself, and if, I, I've talked with Justine, who owns Blacksmith, and, and she's, she was spot on when she said, I make really, really good food, and I don't need any gimmicks, people seek me out, if they can't find a parking space, they will find a place to park in order to go to her restaurant because her food is that good. So I, while I, I understand what Councilmember Nurr is saying about how you don't want retail and restaurant, restaurants and retail establishments can come and go in downtown Main Street. What if three people want to open a skate shop in downtown Main Street, and you've already said, the only retail you're allowed in Heron Park is a skate shop? I agree with Councilmember Green, open it up, let, let's see what happens. The high tide really does raise all boats, and I, I think that it will, the goal for development at the Heron Park site is to complement downtown, not compete with downtown. We have great restaurants and retail downtown, if anybody wants to open something up out there, they realize that they're going to have to compete with the charm and allure that downtown Berlin has. Berlin isn't just a destination for one restaurant or one retail shop. People come to Berlin downtown to spend the day, it's an experience. They come downtown, they grab a drink, they walk around, they shop, they go to Glass Line, they visit the museum, it's, it's an entire day in downtown Berlin. That's what they want, they want to experience that. Anything outside of downtown is, a Google search will find something and it'll make its own destination. And then, with everyone going to whatever's at Heron Park, then they'll say, you know what, let's go walk around downtown. I think that they're mutually beneficial, and I don't think that we should ever lose the park aspect of it. I think that we should maintain the skate park, but I think that it should be something there that the residents want. There's a new Mediterranean restaurant that opened up in West Ocean City that I've heard is amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard it, it's incredible. We, in downtown Berlin, we don't have a Mediterranean restaurant. What if something in downtown, in, they want to open a different restaurant that we don't have? Well, one of these restaurants could close up any day now, so, and then when you sell the property, they could do, they could resell it in a few years and it could be something else. So I would either open it up for something really dynamic and not put any kind of caveat on it, or keep it.
You know, people I know, people I know, what they want is to be able to live in the town of Berlin. As it stands now, as it stands now here today, folks I know cannot afford to live in the town of Berlin. And it's just that simple. We need to, we need to grow our tax base. Because we can't forever not raise tax and not grow our tax base, because it, it is, it is going to be, it is going to come to be unmanageable with the prices folks have to pay these days. People want to be able to live in the town of Berlin, and just like our comprehensive plan that, that we spent thousands of dollars on and had Beep and, Beep and tell us what we already do, housing in the town of Berlin is, is getting unmanageable. We need to try to manage this thing we call giving people somewhere to live. And oddly, if we miss this opportunity, it will be a long time coming back to us. People need somewhere to live. And where I said, that is major, I'm not talking about restaurants, I'm not talking about gyms, I'm not talking about giving people somewhere to live.
That's the, so the, so the mixed use concept, which is, which is strongly advocated by D H C D, by the National Main Street Program, it's, you get the best of all worlds, you get a little bit of REITs, that we get restaurant, you get services, it could be healthcare on the second floor, and then the top floor is all residential at, at an affordable rate where, where people will be able to live. People want to live in, in... People want to live in, in, in a vibrant area. There's, it's hard to find apartments in downtown Berlin. And some of the apartments that were just built, maybe they're a little bit on the expensive side. So whoever's building this facility, this mixed use development, will keep that in mind on what people want for downtown Berlin.
To Steve's point, but to, to Steve's point, it's, and Ivy reiterated it, it's the recommendation that staff of us to open it up and really get something that's got some energy around it that we can leverage. But I think the restricting factor is here.
A lot of great points just been made in the last 10 minutes. I think it's all very valuable, all right on. You know, I hear you every, we all hear about it. And I'm concerned about my kids, kids, we all live here.
Yeah.
You know, we all have that concern. So, I do agree with about growing the tax base. And that's one of the reasons why I support the sale. But I think, you know, if we're getting somewhere, we talk about mixed use development. I mean, I think if that's something that we put down, then that's very clear to these folks. They know what this means. Then we talk about the individual uses of that. You know, maybe it's non-American restaurant, if that's gonna work. You know, I think other than.
I think you say that?
Well, I mean, non-traditional, I don't know how you say it. I'm just, I'm not a politician.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. We see where we can be living the tight.
There's a place that we can, well, I don't think we should say no restaurants at all, but I'm trying to address both sides of the coin as far as.
I, I think when you go ahead and look at limitations like that, you really don't have to box yourself in. One thing we know, a restaurant is only gonna live as good as the customer service, as good as their product.
Right.
We've had restaurants up to be here for two years, it's another restaurant, another restaurant. Once something holds, it's good. This you downtown still parking. When you talk about places for restaurants, for places where people can move about, you don't have it here with parking itself. You have to maximize the benefit of the parking that you have in Heron Park. Mixed use again, it's gonna be perfect. You have to go ahead and under show that where people can go, come, go, and not have to worry about parking spaces. So again, you have to utilize that as much as possible.
So, listening to, listen to all this and, and after the time, I do see a little light at the end of this, this tunnel, which is awesome. So, for, for the record, just to go ahead and say that I love the idea of the multi-use. I, I think that's really a great way to get. When I said earlier, when you asked about the restaurants, is that what, that's what I was thinking. In that complex, we'll come. And honestly, I, I, the, 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 the tough part for me is, rightfully so, you're so concerned about the, the security of the businesses downtown. But I'm, I'm just not sure now how we will get away with trying to restrict anything. That's, now that's where I'm, in my head, kind of. So it's, the multi-use definitely, I think that would be so phenomenal to look. And then my other thing is, I really, and this is just Jack. I really feel at this point, since we're on the, the cusp of the bond for the public works, and we don't really even know, as far as I know, the design layout of the skate park proposal, we should really focus on 57. And in the future, I, I don't know. I mean, if the skate park is, is, I guess it's all circular. But if it has a circular format, things around it, like, you know, like more multi-use housing, I don't, I don't know. That's just where my headspace is right now in the discussion.
Are you a no to restaurants?
When I say mixed use, I mean, I think that's, I'm not.
Well, I, I'm.
No, not mixed use.
I'm trying to get, there was no restaurants and no retail. That is mixed use. Combined out with housing, that is mixed use.
We can't. I mean, if, if we go with mixed use, so that I can.
I'm trying to find the hard no here.
So what a, what a mixed use facility does, it, it, it allows for independent restaurants instead of chains. It's, it's not a big, I don't know, freestanding chain restaurant.
I think that's worth noting. I don't, I see chains.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, on the pops places do that. That's in this discussion for Jack. That's where I.
So instead of no restaurants, could we say no restaurant chain?
What's changing?
Or no chain stores at all?
If they have two restaurants, does that change?
Exactly.
I'm talking like, like a fast food chain. That's what my, that's what I, I. You have to be able to.
I can't even say that because if I, what, when I went to, when I went to Dallas last, last January, I was trying very hard to be open about this whole concept, right? And we went to a section in the town that had been, uh, it had been something different at one point, and they were trying to redevelop. They had turned this into, and that was when somebody from the town of Ocean City, and they had said, open your eyes, look at change. Try to, try to be forward-thinking. I'm trying. They had redeveloped this area, and it wasn't mixed use, but there was something that is on a chain version on the bottom level. On the second level was like another entity, and on the top level, the third level, was housing. But when you say no chain.
So when I say no change, I meant not preferred. You can't really say no. Honestly, you really can't say.
No, because.
It's zoned.
Because here's, especially like this.
You can't really say no to anything.
More than two stores, I'm not, I'm not saying that they want to come here and don't take it like this. But one of those doughnut shops that do the cute little specialty doughnuts, what if that person says, that is exactly what I'm looking for? I need to be on that bottom floor. But they have 10 of them all over the place. Are we gonna cut them out because?
It's hard to restrict, it's hard to say we won't allow this. If you're not gonna have some way of, it's hard to say we won't allow this, period. But if you want to encourage a certain type of thing, you have to incentivize it. And that gets to be tough as well.
I think we are with 15 story use.
No, when I say incentivize.
I know what you mean, but I'm, I'm just saying, I think that there is some incentive there. You're getting, I think you're getting some, some juice there that wasn't always factored in.
What I mean though is, if you're going to say, we would rather you didn't allow this and did allow that, you have to incentivize the, mustn't allow that.
I see what you're saying.
So now I've got some hard no's, a chicken processing plant and a storage facility.
Thank you, Charles.
I've got an emphasis on mixed use. I've got an emphasis on the housing part of the mixed use. Where I'm still at is, and I, I see some yays on this side, I don't know where we stand here, so.
Let me, let me say this. So I'm definitely in favor of mixed use. I didn't want to see that. That should be required. After hearing what Ivy said about being less restrictive, Steve said it too, and I can see that. So I guess the only hard no for me would be a pizza.
And if we don't have change, then it can't be a diner.
Unless it's a processing device.
That was a good. So this is what I'm gonna say about this. It's my thought on the process. During M M L recently, Jack and I attended this workshop, and it was called the Butterfly Camp. This is about the Motown, Leonard Town, it's like, what was it called?
Saint.
Leonard Town.
That's where my family's from.
And were you in there with us?
Yeah, my sister lives there.
So do you say, the long and the short of Leonard Town was, they were, they were like a dying breed. We're not a dying breed. The, the commonality that they had that we have, and that, I will say this. When the con, when the conversation of taking away from downtown was brought up, that's not what we ever want to do. But at the same time, I'm open to things happening over there, always have been, but I'm not gonna go into it when it says taken away from downtown. I don't want to take away from. But what they did in Leonard Town was, they had several spots. This place does this, downtown is this. It is cute now, and it has all these little cute things. And then they had this other area that they developed and made it, and it reminded me so much of this spot because they bought a dilapidated piece of something, and they cleaned it up and turned it into another focal spot. So what they've done is tied it all together. And then there was another spot in town that used to be a farm. And a developer came and is trying to turn it into this multifamily dwelling, dot, 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 and they want a piece of that to save and add that to a part of Leonard Town's economy. Again, made me think of Berlin because there's a spot, I'm not even saying up there, that this could turn into right here in Berlin. But, those things being said, what Leonard Town did was, they didn't close, they didn't put those blinders on and say, oh my God, my downtown is what I need. And I'm not saying that to be disrespectful to us fellas. But what they didn't say, no, I can't do these things here. I just need to focus on this because I don't want to take away from this. So what they did was, just, we just stated, let's make this spot over here a complement down there, tie them together, put something between them that brings them. So that this right here isn't exactly what's over here, but at the same time, they accentuate and bring us together. It's kind of like, you know, um, the accentuation, Mary's got all this great stuff happening over here, but she could separate stuff too. And when you come to Mary, Mary's gonna say, hey, go around the block. Not gonna say, stay right here on my street because I want you to buy all this to me. And that's how we look at this as a whole as a town, is, I'm not saying that it needs to be filled with restaurants. But at the same time, if we continue to look at it as, but wait, what about downtown? We're not looking anything anywhere. Because I mean, if we thought like that, that whole shopping plaza where Tractor Supply is, would still be vacant. If we thought like that, you know what I mean, other spots that are not downtown Main Street Berlin would still be looking like, who did it and what for? We can't keep living this way, folks. And again, I don't want to go down that crazy path that we just did for two, for two years. I don't want to be that ever again. I want to get this done immediately.
Ivy?
And we, so think about the infill development in downtown. There's, there's no more room at the inn. We're, we are at capacity right now. There are no vacancies. But yet, we've had two infill developments. We had Pop's Kitchen, that was another restaurant. Pop's Kitchen is a mixed use. It's got the restaurant on, on the bottom, and it's got the apartments up, up top.
With parking.
With parking, yes.
Same thing with Stevenson, Mr. Girardi's building. He put, I remember talking with him about the retail downstairs. He wasn't sure if he wanted to do one giant store or if he wanted to split it up. So one of the suggestions that I had for him is create two with a roof, with a removable wall, so it could be either one or two. I'm not quite sure what it ended up in, but when they were creating that building, no one made any objection about, well, you can't have this in there, and that literally is right in downtown community with everyone else. So another restaurant opened there, and now there's two retail shops that opened there, and they, and everyone, they're all different and.
So now, can I summarize where we're at?
Can you?
I'll try like this. Well, it's going to be. Uh, 1.2 million dollars or more. I think we're all in agreement there. Parameters, uh, as is capacity, uh, the 15 story use will convey. Housing is a high priority to incorporate, focus on mixed use. Hard no's are a chicken processing plant, storage facilities, and we are now open to restaurants and retail.
Yes?
Yes.
I'm asking you guys, are we?
I'm, I'm yes. I've been in this.
Mr. Gurrell, Jack, what are your thoughts?
I would prefer saying, uh, I would prefer saying, uh, like I said. What, is that the news to me? So, 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 uh, so, no to retail, no to restaurants, is not where I'm sitting today.
Okay.
But, but, but what needs to be there, needs to complement downtown. And now, and now, uh, it could be a play on words, but whether it complements downtown needs to be determined by this body. So, so, so we can hear the proposals. We can hear the ideas. And when we come to try to decide, we need to figure out what complements downtown. Because, because I've been, I've been in communities and worked at places with a vibrant downtown. And, and, and these shopping centers are built on the bottom grass. And in downtown, just, downtown, just, it seems like it's seen, it, it stopped existing except for government employees left. And when, and when 3:30, 4 o'clock comes, downtown is, is just closed up.
But to your point, like, there are towns on the eastern shore that are like that, that have had things out on the highway that don't cause people to come downtown. I see this as the way that Berlin survives is through energy. I remember, and you do too, and some of you in this room probably do, but I remember as a kid, the only thing we had was Rainsuit and some antique stores.
Yes.
And now we've got energy, and people want to be here. But I think whatever we do needs to continue to focus on the energy. And to your point, complementing Berlin as a whole.
Yes. But, but, uh, I also wonder, I also wonder, uh, local. How much downtown is dependent upon, except for our defense that, that bring everybody to come to it? How much does a downtown depend upon Berlin, local citizens for, for, for their business?
Well, they can't even find a place to park to go shopping in the first place, so.
I wonder.
So, Councilmember Nichols, you asked one, you gonna ask the other?
What?
Where are they staying?
Oh, I did. I was way near where he had to say. I'll go with you like this. Let me tell you what I see. I heard housing, housing.
Oh, yeah.
I will take mixed use as long as there's housing involved because housing is a necessity. That's what I wanted to see there, and I'm not saying housing meaning like $700,000 housing, because that's not ever what I wanted to see. That's not what I agreed to. So I say I'll go with mixed use all day long as long as there's housing that people like, your daughter who's lived here her entire life and wants to have someplace to live, can live in.
Has moved over.
Exactly. People like, you know, you've got kids that are about to be adults, or you've got, you're, you're about to be an adult. We want you to come back to live here. We don't want you to have to go and live in.
We don't want to risk it.
We don't want you to have to live in DC or New York because you can't afford to live here or anywhere else. You know what I'm saying? We want you to be like Christian, be an active participant back in our community. We want you to have a place to live, be it you own it, you rent it, you lease it, what have you. That's for me. And if that means mixed use, then that's what I'll take.
Let's not kid ourselves. If someone's buying that property for 1.2 million and then turning around and investing 10 million to, to rehab it, build it out, there's no way you're gonna have a full house. It's just not gonna happen.
But it's not only $700,000 for that apartment.
We don't know.
You.
I'm not saying it is, but you don't know.
I'd say the valuation of the stuff that's using downtown would be similar to what you would see there.
What do you think?
I mean, reasonably. I mean, that's probably where you're at.
As far as the terrains.
It would be competitive. I'm, it's not gonna be, you're gonna.
That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm saying that like the stuff that was just redeveloped.
Oh, it would be similar. I don't see it in the same exact price as that only because, that's just me, and maybe I'm wrong. I mean, you just said downtown is very tight. You're moving around the corner, it may be a little bit less. But that's just me.
Anything else from the council? I, I'd like to summarize our points one more time. Christian, if you have something you wanted to address?
Well, there's so many things. It's kind of harder now, but a skate park.
Can you, come up here.
So a skate.
You keep hanging on.
I know. Well, I wasn't, I was. The skate, the skate park, you gotta look at sidewalks, traffic, it's all industrial, it's all commercial on our side now. Skate park should be maybe in a. Skate park should be maybe in the center of town, maybe one of the other parks we already have. So if I want to go to Decatur Park with my kids and I got a teenager and I got a small infant, I can sail over to the swing set. My 12-year-old, 13-year-old took her here and to skate. We're in the same area, we take the same car to the same area. Not, hey, your kid fell off the skateboard, he's got a broken leg. And I got my three-year-old on the swing set, I got it all across town. I think it should be centralized. And there's no sidewalks currently on that state road where you guys are talking about the skate park. You can't put a skate park until you know what's gonna be up front. The building also that's being sold needs to be carefully sold because you don't know the structural integrity of the building until I guess after the demo's done. You go in there, you analyze, you have engineering company coming, or you sell it as is. But what if they build that wall back and they crack the beam in the ceiling that no one noticed that they cracked? And actually know the roof's caving in on the building that you're selling on the front parcel? That's something I think needs to be considered. Maybe you guys already looked into it. Not sure. Uh, planning director. If you sell the place, I don't know how long you're talking about waiting to sell, but you also are trying to decide on how to build things currently in town. And people can't get things approved from a year ago, it sounds like. We're gonna sell this property, say it sells in October. That's way too fast. It's probably gonna be more like this time next year. But we don't have a planning director to start with to look at all these zoning and setbacks. You can't even make a decision on, we do need more hotels in Berlin, or hotels, whatever you wanna call them. People can't come here and stay here because we've limited the Airbnbs. We've limited now somebody wanting to go to a hotel. We have to realize that we want to grow. If not, next thing you know, Pittsville and Willards is gonna be the next downtown because they grew like Ocean City. And we're still a little teeny town that people can't stay in because there's no housing to stay in. I'm open for the restaurants. I think restaurants is a great idea. But you also said maybe no chains. What would we consider a chain? You gotta look at that. You got Penny Pub, they got six locations. Is that a chain? It's owned by a small, you know, it's owned by a family, Ocean City family. You also gotta look at Bad Monkey. They got two locations. Maybe they want to open up a family shop. Well, is that a chain? They got two here. You gotta look at the limitations, like you said, on the scale of what is a chain? You know, it's owned by a local business person. I feel like that could deter people when you put that in your proposal of the chains. I think they have to figure out what it is. Uh, there's like two more things. Um, bringing people that way. Maybe the back parcels, you could do parking garage, bike rentals, you know? People could park there, you can offer trolleys like the Boardwalk has. It could be an option for somebody wants to put a business in one of those shops, offer a bike rental. You guys keep talking about a skate shop. That's cool, but I think that should be maybe if the skate park, we don't even know if the skate park's gonna go back there.
It is. That's a definite.
That's the definite. But what if somebody comes in to buy parcel 57 and they say, we'll give you another 2 million. We want the whole thing. They put up a proposal. Are you guys gonna do this?
That's not, that's not a, I mean, is it? Because it's.
Public Works facility is going.
Yeah.
That's.
That, that sounds already set.
For sure.
Public Works is a definite.
Public Works has a bond of.
I saw, I know that's on the back on the other side. But I'm talking about if they buy that front parcel, you're talking about you got the other half behind it. And there's that fence line there and you guys want to make another, move that property line up so it comes all the way straight across.
We were just, we were, just to clarify. So the old Rains property?
Yes.
Is 191, parcel 191. So we were talking about where the rear setbacks for 57, which is the processing building, should be. If it's still all convey, it just would say you can't build so.
So far back towards.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah. So that's where the skate park is gonna be on that.
So the skate park's gonna go behind the Rains Sandy Gravel portion. You guys used to do the Jeep stuff where the concrete.
Yeah, okay, okay. So right behind the Public Works building. Gotcha. All right, I just, so if we're gonna do skate park, you guys need to look at sidewalks, crosswalk. And that is a very, you need to contact the state and figure out the traffic patterns. If you're gonna put the housing in there, restaurants in there, and then I went them all tied upstairs, are they gonna be apartments? Are you gonna, are you gonna limitation the apartments to be, they have to be rentals? Or are they gonna be apartments that can be fall? Because rentals will make money long-term. If they're trying to sell the apartments for 350 or 250,000 and make back their $3 million of money be putting into the front or 5 million, they're gonna make those apartments more money, obviously to sell. But they might go to make them long-term cheaper and do a longer-term investment back if they're rentals. So are you gonna limitation when you say all tie use to we're offering the option? You can have rental apartments or buy to own apartments on top of these buildings? Like the ones above Pop's, they're rentals.
The ones here in town are rentals.
They're rentals. Yes, so that's a different question. I understand the ones right by the, the high school. Yes, they're expensive, but there's also a lot here there. They have, you know, pools, they have rec center, they got all those amenities included. There's not enough room, in my opinion, to have the parking, the restaurants, pool and parking, and the house parking, and a pool and all that. So that's also why those may be more expensive because they offer amenities. Where these apartments may just be like Pop's apartment. So there's a lot of things that when you're trying to limitation, put your blinders on up there, that you also gotta think about all the other business specs for the people trying to make this work, what they can get back out of it. And there's probably some more, but that's the main thing.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, so let's summarize, make sure we're where we need to be. Uh, um, parameters, we talked about housing, high priority, mixed use, complement downtown, our only hard-nosed, still remain chicken plant and storage facilities. Um, as is, we'll have a discussion about setback, 1.2 million and 15 sewer uses. Everybody open to that type of conversation?
Ian, do you feel comfortable conveying that?
I, I can convey that.
Okay. Make sure you got no questions. That's how it started.
Yes. What, what I would like to know is that when we have somebody coming down and presenting to us, this is the framework that we're gonna evaluate each presentation. We're all in agreement with that. So when they're sitting here and they say, we met your boxes, we're just kind of trying to figure out which one really makes us energized and which one doesn't.
Right, okay.
Can I sit there and say, I have Petro boxes, but I would also like for you to consider this.
What is this?
Whatever, whatever this is.
Certainly we can consider it. But I mean, these are the, this is kind of framework. It's like the rubric.
Petro boxes.
So what, may I?
Yes, please.
I think that what I think he is asking is.
If it includes some of 57.
If they come up here and say, okay, well, I'm gonna do 57. But I'd like you to consider I'm gonna build a whatever on 410.
I think that that would be creative freedom outside of the rubric.
But we're like, but then let's be fair though. Are we only going to evaluate what they do with 57?
I, that's where I'm, and that's why I think we put so much work into trying to figure out what that is.
I'm just trying to figure out the.
I think if somebody comes and offers 410, they really haven't listened. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Because we're building a public works facility and a skate park there. Let's figure out what that is for. But.
I mean, nobody's wavering on that part, correct? We are not wavering on skate park and, and the public works. Am I correct?
Where else to put a public works?
Let me tell you, we're not wavering, correct?
And we, we went to Bond.
Just make sure.
And we've got sweetheart Berlin's working on a grant application.
Exactly. Yeah, there ain't no wavering.
I'm not wavering on that. Okay. I got it. Uh, I don't think so. Not yet, buddy. Not yet, buddy. Not yet. That's all of our sleepers. And we've got another three pages of packet to go through. All right, let's see. Up next is the town administrator's report.
Uh, I don't have anything. Jimmy wanted to mention one thing quickly.
Okay.
Chao chao. So I emailed State Highway, uh, Daniel Wilson about extending the 30 mile an hour on Old Ocean City Boulevard where the Westview apartments or construction is now getting deleted. It's 30 miles an hour from 818 to Sunlight Drive. We asked to extend that 30 mile an hour to include Westview Court and then coming back in town on the eastbound lane to bring, uh, start 30 miles an hour before Westview to bring that proceeding into up to 818. And I got an email back and that they, uh, they're in favor and they're gonna start a process to include that speed reduction for 1,500 feet from Sunlight to Westview Court.
Awesome. Thank you, Jimmy. Great job, Ian. Now we need to get them outside of all. Yes. I hear anything else, uh, or anything from the council regarding the part numbers? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to comments from the public. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor council? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments, starting with Vice President Gurrell. Um, Councilmember Nurt?
Nothing to next.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Um, call me David Downey. I would say this, farmers' market is supposed to start at 9 o'clock. It's supposed to start selling at 9 o'clock. I know for a flipping fact that folks are out there pounding and haggling these farmers to sell the wares at 8 a.m. I think that, I, I, listen, I can't tell people not to accept the monies, but at the same time, that is so unfair to those of us who follow the darn rules and show up out there at 9 o'clock. When you show up at 9, my daughter and I show up every Sunday at 8:55. We do not go across that street until 9 o'clock. A third of some, some of the merchants' wares have been sold by 9:01. And that is because, I mean, what do they say? Somebody that's standing in front of you while you're unpacking your vehicle and saying, I really would like that. I really would like that. I really, I can't say that we need to police this because that sounds so like, oh, Ms. Nichols, what are you saying? But at the same time, right? That's what my children say, Mom, stop, don't even say it. But I'm gonna say it. That is so uncool. It is, it really is. Because at 9 o'clock, these folks are here ready to shop and just turning some people off because they're like, seriously, for real? Why are you telling me 9 o'clock? And when I get here at 9 o'clock, you don't have anything because people have already been here an hour before buying everything else. Not cool, folks.
So Ivy, just.
You know what happens when you leave the room?
There was concern by Councilmember Nichols that folks are selling before the 9 a.m. start time for the farmer's market.
And some of the troops feel pressured to sell.
Hold on, one second. And, uh, that part of the goods are then gone before that official start of the market. Now, Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah.
I frequent the Camden Avenue Farmers Market. And anybody that's ever been to the Camden Avenue Farmers Market, no. What's that? No, it's not. They all line up. Nobody sells before they ring the bell. You can line up, but nothing sold. If you do, they. Yeah.
I will remind them that they cannot sell before 9 a.m.
Thank you.
And, and the reason, so what during COVID, if you remember, during COVID, we opened the farmer's market early for early sales for seniors, for senior citizens to be able to come and.
And that was cute.
Right, so I think.
And I'm not being rude here, Ivy, I'm really not, not being rude, but we're not when you watch. And there at 9 o'clock, if someone says, and, and, and the retailer says to you, I was trying to unpack my vehicle and people are literally standing there at 8 o'clock pounding to purchase.
Right. I will, I will send a reminder. Thank you, everybody.
They will line up and they, you do not move.
Yeah.
Because they know that if they sell before that bell.
It's a bell ring.
And that's, and really, truly, that's how, again.
You're gonna ring the bell for us every Sunday?
It's the same.
Sunday morning?
It's the same as, it's the same, that's the same precedent as the traffic signal. Follow the rules, folks. Really, truly, it makes everybody happy. Just follow it. Just follow it. This is not early bird special. This is not Black Friday, get here at 6 a.m. and get what I need real quick and get out. You're making it, putting a bad taste in the mouth of a lot of, Sunday, a lot of people were pissed. They thought, they were like, are you kidding me? Are you, at different spots, they were saying, are you serious? So what, what, why did I waste my time coming? And I was like, oh, no, you didn't waste your time. And what you can do is call them on Saturday and tell them they have it for you. But everything, one of them had said, why would I do that when I come here in the morning to see what they have? I'm just speaking for the folks who are out there complaining.
Yeah, this is the first I'm hearing of that, so thank you. And I, I haven't heard that since before that, so I'll send a reminder. Thank you. And maybe I will add a bell.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's kind of cool. I mean, you get to see everybody lined up and you really do, you get your spot. Councilmember Horace, you got anything?
Yeah, that's been a lot. Um, so, uh, first I want to give a shout out to Jimmy and Jimmy for, Jimmy's crew. Jimmy's crew, which helped out with cleaning the vegetation in the ditch behind Henry's Hill. I got a good note about that, so that's, thank you very much.
Microphone. Thank you very much. Um, I wanted to also, since we were talking about signs on Flower and 25, I wanted to throw out if it was possible to Chief Andrew Jimmy, there is only, if memory serves right, the little loop from Escham and Anne, there's only one speed limit sign.
You can have mine. I got four.
Do I want to know how you got them? No, I don't.
You have one mine.
Okay, well.
It's in my front garden.
So, thank you. Um, if we can maybe take a look at that and see if we can get a speed limit. Because that's one of the other areas where people, we've, we've had concerns about that. Like their flood, they turn onto Anne and just goes down because there's no, uh, no signage of anything, so. Um, and then I just wanted to briefly think, briefly think, I briefly wanted to say, because I don't care. Uh, I thought that this was a great discussion night on, on many things. On the moratorium and the Heron Park. And, uh, I know that I threw it out there twice to, to get the group to talk about it. And I just appreciate the, the step forward to getting that kind of result because it hasn't been a long time. We've been working all hard on it, thinking about it. And we're, like I said, I think we see something like. So I'm looking forward to what we, what we hear on the 22nd. Um, speaking of, Councilmember Nichols, you mentioned MML, so I want to thank, um, the staff for registering us, mayor, and Councilmember Nichols taking some pictures. Um, and also the residents for, of course, sending us because I think it really does help us do our jobs up here. And knowing we have resources, other people in our positions and other municipalities and free questions or whatnot, we can always reach out to. I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
My fuel's on. I'm good.
Flashing low fuel?
I have one minute to say. That's it. It's just two minutes. The mayor talked about, uh, um, having some of the cost of city flags.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank those folks that have, um, that have purchased those flags. It, it makes me feel good riding around town to see those flags displayed. And, and to have the mayor say that, that the survey that Beacon is gonna do is paid for partially by the purchase of those flags really makes me feel good. So to the public, uh, I just wanted to say thank you and keep buying those flags.
There are still some available downstairs.
Because Sarah still has.
Yes, we do. We still have some available downstairs. $30 only cash or check, no credit cards downstairs in customer service available.
And what is it, 11 goes to the flag, the remaining goes to?
62 is the cost.
So, I mean, it's a pretty good split. Uh, we had somebody that does kites that helped us out with it. So, thank you, Jim. And, uh, while we're at that, so comments from the mayor. Staying on that, I've asked Sarah, we've been talking about this for a little while. How do you all feel about town of Berlin license plates?
As another fundraising option.
Oh, I'm okay.
It's through the NBA, right?
No, we're up front of Mid House.
I was like.
I was actually meeting like an actual license plate or license plate cover.
Actual license plate.
With a shield.
Or Russo's gonna work on that.
Oh, see, we need to keep it here.
And by the way, we're still trying to find a match for our street signs that we want to auction. So we can still raise some more money, so.
Every now and again, people ask.
I want to, I want to auction them off. We've just hit a roadblock before, but I think we have to get them. That's what we're looking for. We're, we're looking for a date. Mary wanted a date from the gym. Rick wanted a date from the dance. And I'm looking for, I'm looking for a date that can help us get some license, or some, uh, street sign.
Right. Is it what you get at 10 o'clock?
We need, yeah, yeah, it's, okay. That's the end of the mayor's comments. Uh, comments from the press. Mary, Ed Luskey? Has he hired? True or true?
The signs, are we talking about all the old ones?